Evening. This is the May 31, 2023 Special Meeting of the Board, a Budget Work Session with our Finance Committee. I have a few opening remarks and then we'll be going into executive session to discuss potential litigation and contract. And then after we're done with that, which should be about half an hour, we will then proceed with our joint meeting with the Fiscal Committee. We'll also do member comments before we meet with the Fiscal Committee. I was saddened to receive Sarah Elvart De Souza's resignation from the Reston Association Board of Directors. Sarah's contributions to Reston have been innumerable. In the days following George Floyd's brutal murder, she organized the 5,000-person peaceful protest that lined Reston's Parkway from the Toll Road to Baron Cameron. Days later, she organized a protest of the Maar Senataf on the county courthouse lawn that led to its ultimate removal and the removal of the north-facing cannons, eliminating those lost cause symbols from our midst. In her gazebo overlooking Reston National Golf Course, Sarah organized the leadership of the townhouse clusters surrounding that golf course to protest its proposed destruction of that prized open space. As a result, more than 400 homeowners told Supervisor Alcorn that they wanted that open space to be preserved, and under the new master plan, it will be. When the hyperthermia shelters closed for the season in March 2022, and after Reston Strong had paid for hotel rooms for many unhoused Restonians, Sarah organized a tent occupation on the front lawn of the supervisor's office and spent many chilly nights with them to keep the plight of the unhoused in the forefront of all of our minds. As a member of the Association Board, she led the effort to preserve and reopen Shadowwood Pool and for the necessary changes to be made to make it more appealing place for Restonians to swim. That work is underway today. As President of the Association, she led the successful search for our new CEO and reorganized our board meetings to achieve efficiencies while providing members with informative presentations during the Board's executive sessions. During all of this, Sarah brought a combination of passion and humility that exemplified the teachings of Matthew 25. We are grateful that Sarah will continue her work on the Association Environmental Advisory Committee, the County Affordable Housing and Advisory Committee, and the face the lines for climate change so that Restonians can continue to benefit from her activism. We also want to thank her husband, Dawn, and her daughter, Sonia, for the sacrifices they made to enable Sarah to do so much for our community. I know the Board joins me in wishing her success in her future efforts. A couple of other items before we go forward into our executive session. I think that's the next thing. As I mentioned to you all last week, there was a seven-week gap between our election, the announcement of the election, the election of officers, and our first meeting. There was a similar seven-week gap between our meeting in July and our meeting in the end of September. I think that's too long a gap for us to allow business of the Association to accumulate and will lead to a meeting that will be even longer than last week. So I'm asking my fellow Board members to take a look at their calendar that are during the last week of August and the first week in September. And Brittany will send out a doodle to try and schedule a special board meeting for that 10-day period so that we don't allow our business to pile up. I meant to share this last week, and I'm sorry I didn't, but I was trying to be judicious with our time. During the Lakehand Visioning Session that Mac and I attended, we got some important intelligence from one of the consultants that the county had engaged. It was this man's view, and I think this has an impact on our organization going forward, that the day of high-rise residential development in Reston has probably come to an end, that going forward, the multifamily housing we can see will be in the form of what's called Texas Donuts, and that's where the garage is in the middle and the housing is around the perimeter, and in the form of podium. We've already seen that, apertures, a podium-style apartment building. He also indicated that there would be no more speculative high-rise offices built, but that we might see some more trophy high-rise office buildings. I think the individual who was speaking also had a bit of a misunderstanding on the governance of the Lakehand Plaza when he indicated that it was his understanding that there were six condo associations relating to Lakehand Plaza, which of course is not the case. It's pretty clear to me, and I think to our CEO, that this exercise is truly not about the Lakehand Plaza, but about repositioning the Crescent Apartments, which the county owns, and getting ready for that property to be disposed of by the county by sale to a private developer. That invites a question that we will be concerned about, which is, where do the current tenants go? And I hope that at their next meeting on visioning, that that question gets answered. With that, I think I've caught up on everything that happened in the seven weeks between our election and last week's meeting. And let me ask for approval of tonight's agenda, or a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
May I make a suggestion?
Sir.
In view of your decision to postpone member comments until after the executive session, you may wish to have an amendment to the agenda.
I was underspoke. We'll take member comments before we go into executive session. Thank you, Director Flashman. That was helpful. So again, can I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I move to approve the agenda.
As published. I have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor will please say aye.
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 Director Jeff said aye. It's unanimous. The next order of business is member comments. Do we have any, Ms. Cohen, any member comments?
Yes, we have two people who have their hand raised. I believe they will see one at the moment, of Connor Bolognus.
Mr. Bolognus, you have three minutes. Please go ahead if you could give us your address. You need to unmute yourself, sir.
We've unmuted you, please unmute your mic.
Well, maybe we can come back to Mr. Bolognus.
Next up, we have Lisa.
Lisa, you're up for three minutes. If you can unmute your mic, give us your name and your address, please.
Well, we may be taking up their comments after executive session.
Lisa, if you could go ahead and unmute your mic. It should be a little lower left-hand corner of your screen.
Jennifer was able to unmute her mic, so I don't think it's just...
She's saying that she cannot unmute.
Is it because Jennifer's a co-host?
Do you need me to do something?
No.
We're trying to unmute a member so they can make their comment, and we're not being successful with that exercise.
Brittany, you asked her to unmute, right?
Uh-huh.
Well, I'll tell you what. Let's go into executive session, get that out of the way, and see if these two members can get situations straightened out, and then we'll take their comments then. So can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
I move to convene into executive session to discuss contractual matters and to consult with counsel.
Terrific.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Recording stopped.
...
Brittany Amellet, John Kennedy in.
Remember you have two more of the two member committees.
We are back if they're still up. But we'll do the cleansing motion. We'll do the motions first and then I'll ask. Are we back up? All right, I think we're good. Can I have a motion regarding the executive session?
Move that the Reston Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature or involving discussions with council were discussed or considered by the board during the executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Patreen, motion by Dr. Greerich. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, all those debaters say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Director Justack has stepped out of the room.
Yeah, we do have quorum.
Yeah, we have quorum. All right, we move on. I have another motion.
Yes. You got it?
I've got it. I think. I'll be corrected if not. Move that in accordance with the association's policies on purchasing a procurement to approve the change order with Hubert Construction LLC for pool construction services at the Lake Thoreau Pool, increasing the not to exceed amount by $45,387.72 for a total project cost of $3,610,000.
I think we need to do a little wordsmithing there.
I believe the motion I heard was move to increase the not to exceed value of the contract with Hubert Construction LLC to $3,610,000. Believe that's what I heard.
That's what you heard.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those debaters say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed that motion carries? All right, gentlemen from the Finance Committee, thank you for your patience. I hope you were able to get some sustenance. And we're on to that section of our meeting. I'm going to turn to our CEO.
Do you not want to check to see if the members are doing well?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Brittany, any of the other members put out?
Yes, Lisa would like to contribute.
Lisa, can you unmute yourself and state your name and your address, please?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your full name and address.
Sure, my name is Lisa Turkeltaub. I am at 2508 Pinocchio, Maine.
You have three minutes.
Fantastic, thank you. My name is Lisa Turkeltaub. I am a member and I am co-chair of the fiscal committee. I have a couple of words mostly about the community survey and as it relates to budgeting. It is extremely difficult for people who work full-time to actively volunteer and participate in RA. The problem is compounded for people with young children and the reason is why working and that's the reason why working families of young children are not representative on RA committees. Every hour that I volunteer here and it's probably been over 100 hours that I volunteered over my tenure on fiscal committee, I'm taking away from spending time with my young elementary school children that are at home. 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM is the time where my children need me, but I take time out of that every month to participate because I think it is important to participate where it matters. I have been on the fiscal committee for more than two years and I find that a community survey that was put out to be extremely disappointing. Eliminating the ability of families to use and access paid assets like the pool is a grotesque misuse of power and authority. Disguising a hidden agenda to make Reston into a 50-plus retirement community where children are unwelcome as members in paid assets is very disappointing. As we discuss budgets and capital budgets, I think transparency of the use of those assets is extremely important to members. Why did we stop at families and children? Why not ban white people and women from using the pools? Why stop there? What right does RA have to ban or eliminate any particular set of members from assets that we pay for? When we go through and I sat through hours upon hours of budgeting meetings, we have never once discussed that assets would be limited or accessible to only certain members that meet some hidden agenda criteria of people making those decisions. And during the budget season this year, I think the transparency should be apparent of how you intend to use those assets that we are approving. I think a lot of members would feel differently about the capital budget and the overall spending of the organization if they knew that members, like their families, would be unable to utilize the highest dollar assets that we're paying for. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
We do not have any additional hands raised in the chat. If you'd like to make a member comment, please raise your hand.
There's hearing and seeing others. No others. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to our CEO, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you, President Farrell. If we can go ahead and put up the first slide in the PowerPoint deck. As a kickoff here for this year's budget, I want to start in talking about some of the things that are going to come up throughout the course of the year, how we organize tonight, and how we see a number of fairly important values-based conversations playing themselves out that will allow a number of places for public comment, input, and ultimately the board to set some policy and implement that policy through its budgetary choices going forward. forward. I thought I might start with just a few observations and impressions that guided some of my thinking going into this budget cycle. I think everybody in this room knows that the CEO is responsible for preparing the budget for the overall association and adoption. Last year, I started the week before Labor Day, meaning like way at the end of August, so I only got to see the second half of the budget cycle. And I had a couple of observations. Number one, we talk about a two-year biennial budget. This should have been year two of the biennial budget, and in my experience, year two is generally a check and adjust kind of budget. That's really not what played itself out going through the budgetary process last year. There were a number of significant, should we add this, should we contract the budget kinds of conversations that were actually occurring. And I thought that was an interesting observation when juxtaposed with, I think there was a lack of clarity in the community about various cost centers, how we were defining success, what the metrics of different components of the budget are. So as I was getting out in the community and just getting to meet people, you know, I would hear, we don't understand where our money goes. We don't, you know, if we go to the website, we can't see, you know, what are, at that time, $740, but then adjusted to $763 going into this year. What does that pay for? And so I thought, okay, when are the key policy decisions getting asked, and more importantly, when are they getting answered, so that the budget process becomes as smooth as possible, and the Board of Directors is giving guidance with the appropriate amount of input from fiscal and a host of other, you know, input factors as well? So one of the big picture things, and I've talked with a few of the members of the Fiscal Committee, certainly talked with Treasurer Patraine and a few of the board members, you know, through my own work here as CEO, is thinking about a budgetary process that would allow us to start at a policy level and understand what the highest priorities are, and more importantly, a good solid understanding of what the input variables are in the creation of a budget. And so as a result, one idea that came out of that is to use tonight's meeting rather than starting as we have occasionally in the past with, let's talk about a $20,000 line item for another half-time staffer, or let's talk about a $12,000 increase in a program, you know, or something. Talking about the construction of the budget and the key policy objectives that really need to be asked and answered to be able to set a guiding north star upon which all of those decisions are going to be made as we go through this. And there's actually some pretty big things that are, you're all going to want to weigh in. You know, there are going to be things that are going to come up, like what is the role of the community survey in the '24 budget versus the '25 and beyond budget? And getting information about that role so we don't have October and November wild changes, or I'll just say significant turns after you've made a number of decisions leading up to that is a pretty important concept. One of my goals from a transparency standpoint is to be able to do a better job explaining some of those cost centers, as I mentioned, and what the core services of RA are. So sometimes lost in all of this conversation is, we own 15 aquatics facilities, 55 or so tennis courts, 55 miles of trails, 1,300 acres of open space, and the metrics around that quality of service and what our communities come to expect are actually pretty important. I think going through a deliberative process to look at those things and explain them to ourselves as RA as an organization, and then decide if that's the right level of service, an increase, a decrease, and those things when you make your final budget choice is pretty important. So one of the things on that, I'm going to pass this around. It's been about 10 years since we produced this. It's the budget book. Sorry for people that see us as ants. The last time we produced a budget book, which is something that I'm used to, which explains in more narrative form what we do, why we do it, how we're measuring success, and what you can expect out of various departments and the different cost centers, is it holds everyone accountable to what our decision-making was about where we were going to spend our money. One of my other observations, and this just came up for me because I was interviewing last summer, I found it very difficult to find that narrative. And I think we should be very open with the community about how the money's being spent. Now, this particular budget book has a CEO letter. That may not be necessary to explain some of the influencing factors in that person's decision-making going into the budget, but the main point is there's a very robust executive summary that speaks to the policy choices that were made through the budgetary process and then how it led to implementation. So I'll just pass that around. The major components of our budget that we're going to talk about tonight, the revenue and what we think about revenue, there are some things around actuals that we're now getting a better sense coming out of COVID, how we think about whether or not we want to set a target cap and those sorts of things. No, stay on the first slide. Thanks. The capital facilities and planning, operating expenses, cash and surplus cash, this is actually a very big issue. The last couple of years running, we have used surplus monies that we've collected through other means to quote-unquote "buy down" the assessment. That's effectively masking the true cost of what it takes to run RA. That's not a sustainable fiscal approach over the long term, so we'll talk about that a little bit tonight. And then maybe the biggest thing is the assessment policy. So thinking about what's in the base assessment, what is the value that the individual member gets for their base assessment, how we want to think about what people get as part of their base assessment, all those kinds of things, you know, we'll talk about. And then I left sections for things that I believe are very important from an organizational standpoint that I'm going to be building into the discussion as we move through the summertime. I think it's important you all know what those are. And then talking about the member suggestions. Now, on the member suggestions, one of the differences between this first meeting, you know, and some of the others in years past, it is our hope, and this is something that I have talked to Treasurer Patraine and Dave Kerr in the Fiscal Committee about, is that we would take the value discussion you're all going to have tonight and filter the member suggestions through that. And you'll see when we get to the slides, we're going to ask you all some very specific policy questions that will help hopefully set themes around those things that will make it easier to then show you how the member suggestions are consistent with or different than your policy considerations that you're telling us are the guiding north stars you want us to be focusing on. A couple of things about the way I'm intending to structure the budget. You saw this in the agenda memo, so I won't dwell on it. I intend to focus on members in this budget. I intend it to be substantially member-focused, and what I mean by that is, there is obviously a relationship between assessment revenue and non-assessment revenue. In the past, there have been policies set around targeting and setting the CEO on a path to raise non-assessment revenue through significant regional-style events or some way of generating money. I would want to focus going forward on services we're providing to the members and the value they receive for those services, and be very deliberate in that approach. I would also assume, and looking for affirmation, that we are going to continue to achieve the same level of service. So we have a lot of maintenance operations and other things that people have come to expect. There are obviously ways to cut costs in those things, but they have a significant impact on people's quality of life. So I'm going into this assuming that we're looking to maintain the same level of service we've been delivering. And then lastly, in looking at all those cost centers, I intend to set some metrics and expectations around those cost centers and the services that are being provided. I'm not going to characterize this as a zero-based budget. I think that would be an incorrect assessment. That would basically presume that we're going to start as a startup with nothing and build a budget from there. I think what's missing is the transparency and clear deliberate choices for the board to make, that the level of service we're going to deliver with the resources being dedicated to that is where you want to be aiming, you know, the association. So what we're going to be doing is going through at the staff level and doing that assessment and then building that in. So we'll be looking at things like, that have come up, from a revenue standpoint, how are actuals versus budget if we, you know, have been year-over-year achieving more revenue than we have been budgeting, and we were to scale that back, you know, what would the impact overall be? We're going to be looking at the amount of seasonal dollars that have been spent and whether or not staffing in a different way, you know, might make sense. We're going to be looking at whether or not efficiencies can be gained, whether it's in sharing staff resources or certain kinds of soft costs and those sorts of things. So just know that that analysis is coming. We don't necessarily need to spend a bunch of time on that tonight, but that's how we're going to be looking at the current budget. And I mention that because it does feel in the past like the RA budget has been what we'll call an add-on budget, like take last year's budget and assume there's a certain amount that can be added to it. That could very well still be the case. But I would like to go into this thinking that we are going to do a deliberate look at what we're currently spending money on, and is that still the same level of service that we want to achieve? And then, of course, there may be add-ons that are new services or enhancements of service as the board decides what it wants to do. So with that, we'll just go to the next slide, which really just talks about the most important meeting dates. And of course, there are a series of things in the budget calendar that everybody's been given between these dates. Obviously, tonight's the first big kickoff meeting, and then on Wednesday, the 16th, we'll all be getting back together and taking a look at the last list, if you will, of proposals that are going to be built into my first draft one budget.
That's the 16th of August.
16th of August. That's right. When we have a series of fiscal committee meetings and board meetings between now and that point in time to be sharpening pencils, providing information, you know, and moving into the first budget that I'll propose for adoption. So what we were hoping to do tonight, we put together, as I mentioned, those key components of what the RA budget is, and we were hoping to go through each one of those components and ask and answer some of these policy-based or value-based questions, have a robust dialogue between members of Fiscal Committee and members of the board. And I think these are all things that have come up in your various formats, certainly have come up in both places that I have been in only my nine months here, so I'm assuming that there's a certain amount of thought process that many of you have already had on some of these things. I have asked, and very graciously Bob Patraine has offered to do two of the slides, and Dave Kerr has offered to do two of the slides, and I'm going to wrap up and do the assessment slide and some of the things at the end. And then I'll probably be asking some questions, you know, too, as we get into some of this because there's simple actors I would really like to understand from you all as I think about what the association's needs are and how to put policy choices in front of you when you have to make monetary decisions. So that's sort of the intro for tonight. We had absolutely said we were not going to make this lecture, so that's the longest any of us are going to speak by far tonight. We're going to go through each of those main budget components one at a time to stop for a robust dialogue. Both Bob and Dave and I have said we may call on people if they're to buy it, and/or I'll just say from a kind of expectation-setting standpoint, if for whatever reason there tends to be dominance of conversation, you may hear a facilitator say, hey, we need to hear from somebody else, you know, on this particular point or something. So hopefully, everybody understands should that, you know.
Just remember who's got the gavel.
Understand, President Farrell. So with that, I think I'm going to hand it off to Bob first to talk about the revenue components.
Can I first ask? I can't see who's on Zoom other than Jennifer and Lisa. So are there other members of the Fiscal Committee or board members that are in attendance?
Yes, we have Ken, Lisa, and Drawin.
Okay. I hate to be redundant, but I'm going to begin by saying, this is not intended to be a lecture. I used to do that for a living, and I could talk for four hours, but nobody wants to talk about numbers for four hours. And you don't want me to be talking about numbers for four hours. The point of this evening was to have a discussion about the budget and not to finalize numbers. And we thought the best way to do that was to hit it at a very high level, keeping in mind the three objectives that NAC has already mentioned, that this coming year's budget will be member-focused, we're going to maintain services that exist. We do not intend, unless the board chooses to do so, to integrate into this coming year's budget any programs coming out of or any changes coming out of the survey. I think it's way too late in the process. And the third is to act upon where we note efficiencies and productivity gains. Those should be entered into the budget. So I've kind of got where we are. So we are not a for-profit company. We are owners' association. The vast majority of our revenue comes from assessments from our owners because they are owners, and they are, you know, there is an expectation that they will help to maintain the assets that they do have an ownership interest in. We have a certain, which represents 80%, which represents 80% of the revenue stream. 5% are transactional fees and financing, and then the other 15% are made up of program revenues. And interestingly, as you might imagine, a major portion, although I can't, I haven't been able to focus on exactly the number, a major portion of that non-assessment revenue that we talk about is being generated from our members as well. So they're not only paying the assessment, they are paying for other services and programs that we provide.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because as, prior to my time on the board.
Yes.
And under a prior administration.
Okay.
Meaning a prior CEO. There was a lot of noise and stern drawl over non-assessment revenue, and there came a time when there were a whole lot of, I'm trying to find a simile for harebrained, ideas to generate quote "non-assessment revenue."
I think that we're.
If I can finish the thought. It seems to me that it's, that the term "non-assessment revenue" is confusing, and I'm wondering if we can't start referring to it as program revenue or camp revenue or something along the lines that it's not about having movies on Lake Anne and judging people attendance. I mean, it became really distracting from what was the main line of our business. And it just helps me to know that when you say "non-assessment revenue," it's, I'm hearing you, what you're really talking about is camp revenue and program revenue, and I'm wondering if we're confusing ourselves by the terms we use. A thought?
It has always been, you know, kind of a confusing term because individual people have very different ideas about non-assessment revenues, and it is truly that. It's other than the assessment. What other sources of revenue does the organization have? And you've identified them. It's pools, tennis, camps, the community buildings, which we ran out, and we.
It's this conference center, which we run out too.
And the lake house.
Right.
There, in the past, we have, I don't think we have, we have been as focused on member service as we hope to be with this coming budget.
Understood.
And the projects largely had an external focus, so is that, that's a discussion that we should have. Maybe that's the first question you bring up, is, is it appropriate that we focus primarily on members? Or should we be looking to generate non-member sources of revenue? Perhaps at the, at leaving members as if they are any of the general public? And maybe that's the first question. Does anybody have any feelings on that?
Yes.
And what's your feeling?
Every year, we should review non-member fees for the activities we provide. Every single year. Many years, we don't change fees. Members pay a big fee, and then they pay fees, but non-members, you know, need to pay a fair share at least, so. I mean, I think that's a piece of programs and services should be looked at every single year.
So one thing just to add on that, because there was a significant policy choice last year to increase non-member fees, and you may recall there was a discussion about what might that do? So how elastic is the revenue generation relative to demand? So there was a concern, if we raise the fees too high, what if non-members just don't come, and then a chunk of the non-assessment revenue goes away? We're not seeing that. We're actually seeing, and we're not all the way through the purchase yet, but for the first quarter, we're actually seeing non-members purchase. So that will be a relevant factor for you also, to Dave's point that's come up a couple of times. Should we decide to raise the non-member fees for different things, setting some value system, the impact of the members should go down, and non-members should pay a higher percentage? We are seeing demand, and people are still willing to pay at this point in time.
And to add to that, that increases the value of joining RA. We've got a number of new properties that have chosen not to become members of Reston Association, and increasing the price of non-member activities, I think, also increases the value of joining RA.
I agree. Raising our assessment and not raising non-member fees makes no sense.
And I think the proportionate value, like, needs, I mean, I think we should be looking at the proportionate value because the spread in a lot of those fees for the high-demand services, it just doesn't seem to be enough, especially when you think about it, that we're already paying our assessment, which funds the underlying services that are being used. Like, maybe it doesn't fund the staff, so if you take some of the programs out there, our fee pays for the path that those programs are executed on. Our fee, our assessment fee pays for the tennis courts where tennis lessons are being offered, and so that's not really being considered, I think, when you look at the member/non-member fees for things like tennis lessons, where, like, we're paying. for things like tennis lessons, where, like, we're paying a lot more for those lessons because a portion of our fee is paying for the courts. Just a different way to look at it.
Yep. It seems that, and I've had this conversation with Mac a little bit, now, one of our ongoing conversations with the P&amp;Z Committee, that doesn't support this concept at all, apparently, is that all the new residential should join RA. Okay, now, let's take a look at them from the point of view of what we're charging. Council, correct me, but an individual townhouse owner can petition to join RA, doesn't have to be the whole cluster. Same thing with the condominium. An individual condominium owner could decide to join RA, subject their condominium to our covenants. Is it in our best interest to give those folks an inducement to join RA and to price the passes and the tickets and the like in a way that encourages them to submit their dwelling unit to RA, on the one hand? On the other hand, those projects that are not, that are rentals and are controlled by one developer, the individual, occupant of an individual unit doesn't have the ability to say, hey, I want to join, and that happened on Saturday. And a renter came up to Mac from one of the TSA projects and said, hey, what does it take for me to join RA? And Mac properly said, well, you could buy a pass. It seems to me that, on the one hand, we want to set our fees to, fee simple ownership might want to have a different number than the fees for tenancies, in the hope that we'll get the revenue from the tenancies and the inducement incentive to join to the fee simple owners. It's a thought, I don't, I haven't played it out, but I mean, I'm thinking that if the emphasis is on membership, we want to do everything in our power to encourage membership. And right now, I think the last number you gave me, Bob, was 1,000 units are not RA members in the TSA area?
At least.
Right. And if you think about that, that's 3/4 of a million dollars. What is that?
But that, but the problem, the problem there is that the current deed doesn't give us any flexibility, except if the value of the property is below a certain level, everybody pays the same.
No, I understand.
So in order to, to, to do what you suggest, we, it may be appropriate.
I'm talking about the pass, what we charge for a pass, what we charge to.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Well, the way that, I mean, that's an interesting idea, and a way to do that, that we've never discussed in budgeting before, is that for non-members to participate in anything, they have to pay a non-member participation fee, and maybe that's a $300 contribution to the capital fund, or a $400 contribution to the capital fund. Like, there could be, like, membership should have exclusive privileges other than a $25 discount. So if you, you could make it compulsory that non-members have to pay a participation fee before they get to participate.
So I'm focused on, in this conversation, on the, not, not how much we charge when they join, but how much do we charge them to get their annual pass?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with you. That's what I'm saying.
Is there a differential, is there something to be gained by having a differential between the renters and the fee owners? And giving them, giving the fee owners an incentive to join? It's, it's, it's a woolly concept, but it's, it's something that, it's kind of along the same lines that Dave was talking about. Do we give the non-members, how do we price that benefit, that participation? And in pricing it, what are we trying to accomplish?
It's, it's not my idea, it was Sarah Silverage's idea, but she came up with the concept of offering non-members a subscription on a monthly basis, which, which could be a very interesting idea, but it would have to be studied, obviously, in such a way that they could pay on a monthly basis like you're, like.
You're capable.
Being, in having an audible account. So you pay 15 bucks a month, certainly 15 bucks is not enough, but you pay a subscription price, and you can opt out at any given, at any time. But then you can't use things. So it has some appeal, it would be probably more cost-effect, cost-effective for the not, quote, "non-member," but they would have access, you would, our incremental costs would be probably negligible unless we had 10,000 people want to join.
Hopefully, we don't have that problem.
No. But that's certainly an idea to consider.
That would be hard to police, to know if they pay.
Oh, it's hard to police now. I talked with Rob Tucker about people wanting, you know, draping onto the tennis courts when he's, he's been there, and he asked him, do they have a pass? And they said, well, no, I'm from Great Falls. And say, well, can I get on anyway? This is a public course. It's like, no, these aren't public courts, these are for members, particularly when members, members are.
They're public if you pay, they're public if you pay the admission fee.
We don't have a mechanism to do that at.
Well, no, the pass is the admission fee.
Well, yes, we do, we do, but it's, you know.
What I'm trying to say is, just like the park authority has a seasonal pass, we have a seasonal pass.
Right.
And so it is open to the public, I don't want that, that gets, that cuts across a line in a different argument. There's, there is an admission fee.
Any other thoughts on the concept of this particular concept?
I have one other question, Bob, just back to the questions on the slide. So we spent all time talking about some of the rec pass fees and those sorts of things. I think one of the policy questions I'm asking myself when I'm looking for affirmation, should I be thinking about new revenue sources? So, for example, I heard a number of comments earlier about not focusing on regional level, you know, bring outside members if it generates revenue as a primary budgetary focus. Now, you're going to hear, when we get into the program discussion later on, and Laura's got all sorts of ideas, we might see increases in certain programs, there'll be a corresponding revenue, and expenditure increase, you know, it's not necessarily like a wash to the revenue good, so we're not, no need to talk about that today. But I am thinking about the concept of revenue targets, and, you know, where, as I mentioned, we're going to study actuals versus the budget and see where there's flexibility, and Tom's already doing that. But, but I think the point for this variable would be, how are you all seeing revenue relative, as a component of the budget?
You asked one question, should there be a revenue, be a ceiling? And the answer is, the stat, the, we already have that in our deed, and the last time I checked, it was over $900. We could go that high under the restrictions of a deed, somebody's got to calculate that. What is it?
It's over 900.
Yeah, it's over 900.
It's over $900, so. I think, John, the point here, though, was, should there be one for '24? In other words, for next year? Is the board interested in saying to CEO and people working on budget, we want you to stay within X? Or not?
That's a different question.
But that was, right.
That's the question you're asking.
Focused on next year.
For the next, next two years, what is, what's that?
Yeah, do you feel there ought to be one, or just go for it?
Another thing that I think there's a distinction, Mac, between what we charge the people in the TSA and people from Great Falls and Oakton and stuff like that. We want the people in the TSA to become part of RA. And what we charge people from Oakton and Great Falls and Herndon and Oak Hill, that's South Herndon, what we charge there, I'm not asking, I'm, I don't think, I don't think we should be focused on them as a market, whereas I think we should be focused on the folks in, who are members, and then secondarily, folks who are in the TSA. And I don't know if my fellow board members have a different view, but to me, you know, it kind of goes back to one reston, and if you're outside the task force area or the census designated place area, I'm not too that worried. I don't want your participation here to preclude the members from participating.
If I may, I'd like to get some clarification from you, Mac, on what you meant by non, what was it, non-assessment revenue? You said, do we want to go, we want to explore, want you to explore, non-assessment revenue? What did you mean by that?
Yeah, I just was looking for some affirmation, because I made some affirmative statements, both in the agenda memo and here tonight, that I was looking at member-facing. So, for example, we're trying some new things this summer, we're looking at pool parties and other things that are really meant more for members than trying to become the new regional, you know, pick-a-thing that is really focused and marketed towards non-members, but may be a significant revenue source. So we're not currently dedicating staff time to putting together a program schedule that might contemplate those as a significant revenue variable.
Okay. Unless there are other issues on the revenue side that people want to bring up, you don't want to get bogged down in one top, one topic. Got to move over to the next slide on operating expenses. Let me remind everybody that personnel, personnel-like expenses, including in that total professional services that we, that we use, like the, the virtual CIO that we have, instead of having a full-time staff, we've, we have support from outside, represent 70% of our cash operating expenses. I use cash operating expenses because we do have certain noncash expenses like depreciation that are not really budgeted for. In that, we also have, 17% of our costs are committed, considered administrative, and the biggest, two biggest portions of those are facility rent and insurance. And we are into, we are locked into this lease through '29, mid-year, mid-year of '29.
30.
30, is it 30?
Yeah, 30, June of 2030.
Thank you. I've got my support here. So those are, those are the two biggest components of operating expenses at a high level. Again, we did not want to go into the specifics below that, but we came up with some kind of overarching questions that we wanted, put any, any thoughts on, are, are any changes in employee positions required, plus or minus? Now, staff is going to have their position, but there are obviously their needs, but we need to at least be aware of what changes the board or members of the fiscal committee believe are justified or desirable in order to improve efficiency and the quality of service. Any thoughts? Anyone?
Yes. So, looking at this slide, listening to you and reading, Mac, your initial intro and the overview, I saw some discussion as to, you know, working toward, towards the same level of service. And, you know, I, as a, as a member and as a person who speaks to members on a regular basis, you know, my concern is improving the level of service, not working to the same level of service. So, you know, I, I would advocate, you know, working towards an improved level of service. My issue with that, however, is that we don't have a baseline for what is the current level of service. You know, like, how do we then measure our improvements if we don't know where we're at right now? So, you know, I see any changes in employee positions required, plus or minus, and I don't know how, we're in a position right now to have an intelligent response to that question.
Yeah, let me just come on on a couple of things. And first, yeah, I think you raise a good point. When I speak to maintaining levels of service, I think that's a, a bottom-end threshold, so we have a lot of maintenance activities and things people have come to enjoy. I understand the association in the past has, for example, looked at outsourcing certain landscape maintenance at Fairfax County, and that made it about 45 days, and then suddenly there were mass complaints, you know, and we took things back over and that, that sort of thing. We've had a number of discussions at the different committees about improving a number of different services, particularly around use of technology, some of the things that we do around how we're doing capital facilities planning, you know, and those kinds of, where we spend our money. So, yeah, I definitely imagine a robust discussion about improving service in, in many ways. I wanted to make sure we, should I be on the page? Am I thinking about, and we'll get to this somewhere, you know, a reduction budget somewhere or something that is a fairly significant budgetary philosophical, you know, thing? In terms of this question, I think this would have less to do with your fluid understanding of the entire organizational chart and every single service we provide, and therefore add a box here, than I think, as, as Bob and Dave mentioned, their interaction at the board level, at the treasurer, and then at the fiscal committee level, are there services or things that you are already identifying that, that we should be studying? And as I mentioned, I'm studying all the cost centers, and when you, we get to the end, and you've probably seen all the slides already, some very specific things that I've already identified that I think we need to look at for an increase.
I think perhaps another way to look at this is maintaining the current services that we have. So, for example, if, if I remember correctly, we had 2,200 campers last year. We should be targeting, maintaining that level, because that, that is a significant number of children that we're, that are having useful activities during the summer. The same way with the number of people using, using the pools. I know Laura presented, at the board meeting, presented a new system that she's now being able to track, better data, which is one of the things that we've, we've, we've struggled with. And those are, those are what I kind of consider service levels. So we should be maintaining the number of people that are enjoying, at least maintaining the number of people that are enjoying the services that we're now providing.
See, it's the word "enjoy," that's where my, my issue is. Like, we, we right now know how many people are using. We don't know how well, how much they're enjoying it. So right now, we know the binary, binary choice. We know, are they using it, or are they not using it? We don't know how well we're doing in any of those places. So we may have 2,200 campers, we may have 1,700 who loathe it, and they go because their parents make them. So, you know, my concern, so, so I guess my, my issue is, do we then, for next year, shoot for another, another year of 1,700 kids who hate it? Or do we try to make, make it better? And that may mean that we need a line item for someone to help us identify that information. But I think that that is a question that needs to be asked in conjunction with this process. If, if we're going to improve or maintain, you know, I think that, that's, that's, that's a choice, you know, that's a very real choice, and I think it should be as intelligent a choice as possible.
I think from a, so when we, when we say with these things on improvement, and we tend to focus on programs and whatnot, but what, what, you know, what I would like to see in, in the budget this year is the, the different areas that will have improvement, like, maybe digitizing some of the covenant process, or, you know, the processes that are all focused towards members, and you can't change or improve everything all at once. So I think on some of these things, when we think about improving, I think instead of thinking one-year base, we do need to be thinking multi-year base. Like, this year, the focus is going to be covenants, next year, the focus is going to be programs, the year after that, I think we need to, even though the budget is for one to two years at a time that we're reviewing, I think we need to have more of a longer-term thought process and plan for how we go about it, so we don't get overly concerned with single light items like we have in the past.
Lisa, that's, that's pretty much where I'm going with my question, so thank you. I think we need to do an assessment to determine, you know, what are the best areas for us to focus on over the course of the budget cycle?
So if I can beg Ms. Turkelbaum and Ms. Josh Shuck's indulgence, I, I can't tell when you want the floor unless you raise your hand. I had recognized Director Gray, which, you couldn't tell, I had done that, but I had. So let me give the floor over to Director Gray, which.
Mac, when assessing your C-suite and the senior leadership team.
Pull the mic closer.
Is that something that, so we've talked about a replacement for CFO, replacement at COO, a, a, an outreach to bring on a CFO, the potential to move away from a virtual CTO to an in-person CTO. to an in-person CTO, and the environmental position, which I believe is at the director level. How does that, is that something that we will see, will we see different variations of that potentially in different versions? How do you anticipate bringing those to the board to look at or evaluate?
Yeah, thanks for having a couple of things. So, a couple of those are new ideas that we have quite hit yet tonight, but I know the board members have been going through this and asking me some questions. The idea of how that all gels together is actually part of the budgetary process. Now, some of the positions you've mentioned, though, have been authorized in previous budgets and have very specific functions in mind, which is why they're already in the budget. The one that you mentioned, the CFO, I'll hit a little bit later on in some of the thought process there. And again, that's still in consideration at this point.
Okay.
Director Flashman, anything?
Well, obviously, you have a number of positions that you are considering, some which are replacements for people who are leaving, and others that are new positions with the goal of improving the performance overall of the association so that it renders better services, improved services, more quality services, or more efficient and more effective services to its membership. So, until we know, really, the nature of the positions and what you hope to achieve with those positions, it's difficult for us to respond, I think.
Anybody on finance? Director Josh Chuck, did you have anything at this point? Anybody else on finance, Dave?
Yeah, I just...
Is your mic on, Dave?
Yes. I just want to respond on, the way I read what Mac has said about maintaining services, I differentiate that from SLT members making their services better. To me, those are two different things. In other words, you know, one question from a budget perspective, particularly a very high-level budget perspective, is should we have more activities, more things to do? And correct me, Mac, I'm not trying to put words to you, but, you know, one way to face a budget is saying, we're not going to look so much at trying to grow what we do, we're trying to maintain what we do, but do it better. So, maintaining doesn't mean the same status quo of delivery or acceptance by members, I don't think. I don't read that. I think that they should be working every day to make everything they do better. But from a, how do you develop a budget and add up what it costs to deliver stuff? We have to know whether we need to change what we're providing dramatically different, if that makes any sense at all.
One of the examples of what you're talking about, Dave, is, and we've had this conversation, we had it with Supervisor Elkhorn. There are HOAs, including my little cluster, that provide a service that RA currently doesn't provide, and it's solid waste. And you could see a situation where the day plan comes when we incorporate that as a service that RA provides. It is perfectly within our charter to do that. Now, do you do that by buying a bunch of garbage trucks and hiring a bunch of guys to go collect the garbage? You know, but that's an example of enhancing service.
Correct.
It's not on the table now. For anybody who's listening, there's no proposal to do that now. We're having conversations about having the government take it over or having Small Tasked, Number Five, take it over. But that's an example of an expansion of service from the base we have today. Again, not a suggestion, just an example of a way that you could provide for more service. On a couple of thoughts, I've heard this now a couple of times, that the survey should not be incorporated into the budget. I'm here to tell you, I think you're missing something there. There are questions in that survey that absolutely implicate the budget, and y'all need to go look at them when we get the numbers back. Because one of them is, are you getting value for money? I want to know that before I vote on my budget, and I hope you all do, too. Now, most of the questions in that survey are focused on capital improvements, capital budget items.
Right.
And most of those questions are not going to be in this year's capital budget. They're going to be in next year's capital budget, okay? But to say that we're not going to look to the survey in the course of doing this year's budget, I think is a mistake because there's going to be a lot of feedback in that survey that's going to tell you about the quality of the customer experience. Those questions are there, and so we should be paying attention to them in the course of the budget, and we'll have the survey results in September, right?
Well, yeah, or October. I mean, we're looking at preliminary results, and the reason that I'm raising this issue is to potentially have a scenario where we make significant changes, not like quick wins or something that pops up out of the survey, would be a lot of work between now and there to take a 90-degree turn.
Understood. But I just don't, I don't want us to be, you know, putting on blinkers and saying, whoa, the survey is not going to be paid attention to. It definitely should be paid attention to.
No, my point, when I brought it up, was capital spending, not are you satisfied or dissatisfied with current services? That's...
We agree.
From the budget standpoint, worry about the big bucks.
Right. You and I agree. I just didn't want us to discount the survey, the product of the survey and the budget process. Go ahead, Bob.
I just want to bring up one other question, we'll skip over the other ones, unless somebody has a burning desire to talk about opportunities for outsourcing or productivity gains, those will pop up. But one of the issues that comes out of my background is staffing retention succession planning. And here, it can go all the way down to staff level because we have a goodly number of people that have been here 15, 20 years. And there are, there is very little fat in the organization in terms of people that can be substituted for them. You're going to have to have new hires. And the skills that they have, such as arborist, are getting more and more difficult to find. So, I think that has budget implications, not so much immediately, but could, because we've had key people like Larry retiring on us and having to go through the loss of that corporate knowledge, plus the skills that they have, that they bring to the organization every day. And it is an area that even big companies forget about. They focus on the CEO, and as much as I love Mac, you know, we have a lot of opportunities for people to grow into positions, and that has budget implications, not only for this coming year, but for future years.
Before we leave this area, you had asked about positions, changes in employee positions required, plus minus. You know, what I have heard my fellow board members talk about is the CFO, I think we'd beat that to death, COO, internal IT, someone who's on staff, the environmental director, which has been budgeted for forever, and I know you're trying to hire that person, and wish you all the luck with that. Another position we need to talk about, that you have a temporary spot in, is an AICP. You know, there's a conversation we need to have, is whether that planner is full-time on staff or whether we have it, as we had it in the past, with having a planner who worked for a law firm and billing us by the hour, who was not on staff. I can see either approach working for the association, but what is absolutely clear is that if we have a resolution that says every new residential dwelling should join RA, if it's in the TSA, that's our resolution, and that we should be getting, RA should be getting some of the proffer money. The only way that's going to happen is if we have somebody who's bird-dogging it, and we can't expect the CEO to be doing it and even the COO to do it because just the volume of stuff. There are two applications right now that are going to come up in the end of June and early July over at Comstock, and there are several hundred units there, and we want them to proffer to join RA. I mean, it will reduce our assessment, it will grow our base. Well, I can't expect, I don't think any of us can expect, Mac or anybody else, to track that, and the proof is in our track record over the last four or five years. I mean, any number of applications have been approved, and they didn't even think about proffering joining RA. And there's, you talk about revenue loss? No. Three-quarters of a million dollars every year, we're not collecting because they don't belong. Well, you know, if you get half of them, it justifies a full-time planner, and it is clear, based on my interaction with the P&amp;Z committee, they're not carrying that ball. They don't think it's important, some of them don't even, some of them don't even think it should happen. The loudest voices don't think it should happen. So, if we're going to get that, if that lady's resolution is going to have any meaning, we're going to have to have somebody on it. Because, you know, Comstock is coming through, this is a profit condition amendment, they're coming through again. And as I said earlier in the evening, the land use landscape, pardon the pun, is changing. The high-rise residential is going away, the high-rise office is going away, and a whole bunch of other stuff is coming in. There's going to be a lot of work for that person. So, how we make that happen is something that we need to decide in this budget cycle. And I want to have a conversation about that because if we can be successful, it can more than pay for itself many times over.
I think just one thing on that, because I have not heard any suggestions yet of new service lines. There've been a couple of, you know, comments about staffing generally. Yeah, I would characterize land use and land use review as something we do not currently service or staff. And I say that, and we'll talk more about some of my thoughts about the executive team when we get down to the CEO suggestions, for things we're going to study. But, yeah, having the chief operating officer do the kind of land use review off the side of their desk, at the same time we're trying to make systems improvements cross-departmentally, be more visible in the public, be a stronger player, Fairfax County, you know, those sorts of things, the executive team really should be focusing on those things, and if we want to be in that business, we should think about staffing it appropriately. So I'm posing that as a question. If we want to be in the land use business, it's something we want to talk about going through this budget cycle. What are the needs? What service levels do we want? And John just mentioned some of the proffer impacts. I'll just also throw out, there are a lot of other quality-of-life things that come up, whether it's MTAC and first and last mile, or pedestrian safety and connections, and even in our Barton Hill discussion, should we move trails, and what does that look like? And what's the coordination between our land use planning and/or our parks and rec planning and our CIP, and a bunch of different things that planners tend to do when that service line is offered? So, beyond just track SSBA's, you know, at the county or those kinds of things.
Maybe we should move on to capital, then.
My turn?
Your turn.
Okay. I will reiterate what's been said before, no numbers. Try to make this as much a discussion, I mean, there'll be a few numbers because I can't resist, but it's much of a discussion, and we'll pose a few questions and hopefully get some dialogue going. I don't want to read through this unless people really want to learn about the definitions. You know, we have two primary accounts, Triple RF and CARF, okay? One for existing assets to keep them maintained and in good condition.
That's Triple RF.
The Triple RF, and CARF, which is new capital asset acquisition. In fact, if you look at the graph, the orange is new capital acquisition, and you'll notice that that is virtually nonexistent until last year, okay? One of the reasons for that is it's typically been, you're going to buy a new truck for essential services, or you're going to get, I mean, it's something, those numbers are in the millions, obviously, so when you're buying something for $20,000 or $30,000, it doesn't show up in there, okay? And that's typically how we spend our CARF money, in buying single assets.
In most of those cases, though, we're replacing an old truck with a new truck, so wouldn't that be Triple RF and not CARF?
They are. We, I'm saying, if we add something new...
A new truck.
It would be CARF. But what's happening now is we're looking at things like our parks and recreation areas, Barton Hill Lighting, which has actually come and gone. I think, you know, you're familiar, you'll notice that the big budget item in 2021 was Barton Hill Lighting, which was CARF. It was going to be brand-new asset on that site, but after we budgeted it, it then has now been...
There's only an administrator who helped us out on that.
And, but now it's been, we moved those funds last year when we changed it from Barton Hill Lighting to the Hunter Woods Ball Field area. So, they're still committed, okay? But it's something that is, and the reason I bring it up, we also have Hook Road coming in the next couple of years, as well as Hunter Woods. And CARF and Triple RF are funded very differently. Triple RF is, the expenses to do that are spread over 10 years. So, when you've got a project, like it could be Lake Theropool, it could be Shadowwood, it could be all kinds of pools or tennis courts, we take all of those figures for 10 years, add them up and divide by 10, and fund those things. In CARF, you fund them on the spot. There's no stretching out of those expenses. So, when you get a half a million dollar park to make new and better, and you call it CARF, you have to come up with those funds in one year and not spread over 10. So, just highlighting that because it's, you know, we're looking in the fiscal committee at how we define those assets and making sure that we're defining them right, and then we're also looking at, is the way we fund them proper? Should we look at how we fund them differently? And just so everyone's aware, you know, no one on fiscal, certainly, and I don't think anyone on staff, is against the concept of borrowing money if we ever needed to borrow money. That's another way we can fund, we haven't done that, with one exception, Lake House. We haven't done that in the past, but we certainly are open to it if necessary in the future. One of the things on the slide, just wanted to give you an idea of the magnitude, you know, when we started the year, Chris and his team in Capital Projects had $7.2 million of Triple RF projects to work on. In addition to that, they had $621,000 of CARF projects to work on. That's huge numbers. A lot of that's Lake Therot and things like that, but a lot of things are in the works at any given time. In fact, one of the things that fiscal sometimes talks about is whether or not we should continually approve new projects if there's already too many sitting in queue. You know, sometimes it's worth looking at the queue that you're carrying over, and maybe even though the plan says you ought to do this, maybe adding on more isn't necessarily the right thing. But that's not necessarily a topic for tonight, it'll be a topic during the summer and when we get into the budgeting in the fall. So, let's, a couple of questions, and I want to bring up the point that John made on the survey, because I don't disagree with what he said, okay? I think the intent and the reason that question is in the capital slide is that if there are capital, and by capital, we mean major facility decisions that can come out of the survey, they aren't going to be in place and understood, okay, enough to be in the 24 budget. So, we don't...
We would, as a part of our, the association's practice, Dave, we would take those suggestions and work them through PRACT before they would come to the board. So there's no way you could honor your current systems and take that survey and have it telegraphed into this year's capital budget.
Right.
Because we'd have to take those suggestions that got a good vote, send them over to PRACT, let PRACT work their process, and then make a recommendation to us. That takes a year.
And that's the intent of this.
I was just going to say that if we didn't want to leave anyone the impression, particularly members, that something was going to happen immediately because it was, there was a preponderance of interest in doing a particular item.
And I think that's fair. I think that's fair of the membership to say that.
If other aspects come out of the survey, that's fine, but if we start worrying too much or thinking too much in July, August, and September about what that says on our capital, we're going to have a hard time putting together a budget.
Agreed.
And then the question becomes, you know, the real question, so any new amenities, I mean, by new meaning CARF, brand-new capital assets that we have to buy, because those are the things that have to get funded in the immediate year that we didn't spread over time. So that's something that... So that's something that at some point, you know, the board needs to think about, know what's out there maybe as opportunities, I don't know if Chris has got a new list. You know, we do have a five-year plan now that Chris puts together, every, and updates quite often, actually, that if you haven't seen it lately, I'm sure he's got, you know, the latest one available, and is worth looking at.
One comment on that, Dave. So there have been several requests to try to accelerate the capital discussion and the overall budget process. So Chris and Tom are looking at the calendar right now to see how we might be able to accelerate some of the conversations, just in general, around capital, as our obviously largest set of expenses. Doing that later in the game, its impact on O&amp;M dollars is actually fairly big, because you're throwing out other ideas for how we want to think about staffing or other resource deployment, especially if there's a big project out there.
Director Graywich?
Is that, moving up in the calendar, is that what is kind of being hinted at here? And I apologize, I don't mean to derail the conversation, but to, it's down to slide nine, capital projects, both Triple RF and CARF, need to play a more prominent role in the budget process. Is, is that the sentiment there, that it just needs to be earlier in the budget process? Or is there something more impactful that I'm not understanding, that we need to be funding more additional funds here?
I, I may look to some of the folks that participated in more budget processes than I. So admittedly, one of, so my background has been in organizations where we use the term color of money frequently, so there are different funding sources, and the monies have to be set aside separately. So typically, capital projects are funded by tax levies or other kinds of funding sources that can't be mixed with O&amp;M dollars, so they almost have to be treated like, we'd be having this meeting for capital, and then we'd have a separate meeting, you know, for O&amp;M. We've been mixing apples and oranges together because we cash fund basically everything here. So I think, from my perspective, doing it earlier allows you to have a more strategic discussion about really what your highest priority items, whether it's capital in one year, or certain O&amp;M things that we want to improve service or increase, or, or those kinds of things. I also think, and I might look to somebody who's been on the board or fiscal committee for a while, there can be a tendency to add something as a big idea midstream, so not just having a capital conversation earlier about what's in the CARF or what's Triple RF really needs to, from a maintenance standpoint, handle, you know, those kinds of things, but like, a whole new idea. And then pricing it out at like, the second-to-last budget meeting, you know, those sorts of things, but.
And the other part of it is to Director Graywich, is that, as Dave was describing...
My hand's been raised. I don't mean to interrupt, but my hand's been raised for a while.
Lisa, I was gonna get to you next. Just to answer Director Graywich's question, if you, if you were, Dave went through this, but our, our Triple RF, funding Triple RF is part of our annual budget. So we're taking one-tenth of it. So having that not exactly locked in does translate into what the annual contribution to Triple RF is. So like last year, just as an example, we talked about pushing out of Golf Course Island for a number of years. Pushing it out three years would not have had an impact on this year's assessment. Pushing it out five years would have had an impact on this year's assessment. So you get those kind of timing issues that have a telegraphed effect back into this year's assessment. Mr. Turkelbaum?
Thank you. I think when we're talking about capital, capital projects, I think, you know, in light of the community survey that's out there, the qualitative factors around budgeting process are just as important as the quantitative ones. And so when we're talking about the capital projects this year, I think the intended use is really important, because the idea in the, in the survey that we're talking about using, that we might change what members have access to and not have access to, that's a really important part of the conversation, as to whether it's a good fiscal quantitative responsible, responsible item to put all that money into a pool. Just a, a new, a nuance that I think should be discussed this year.
And if I might, if you looked at the graph, too, you know, another, another weight of, of a prominent role, okay, is the fact that it's now getting to be almost twice as big as it was just a few years ago. We try to cover our capital spending with our own generated cash, with our, with our operating margin to cover that capital. Used to be able to do that a lot easier than we are now able to do that, as, because, I mean, expenses grow, capital gets much more expensive, we have more projects, so, so it's prominent in that sense as well, just the overall girth of the, of the, of the, of the capital dollars.
And our assets are old.
And they're old. Absolutely.
Almost everything we have is 60 years old. Now, we've renewed some of them, but a lot of them are reaching the end of their useful life. Director Blaschman, anything? Okay. I, I did want to have a thought in, as we go through capital budgeting. Somebody needs to help me figure out how we do this. The, the, the concepts, I tried to kick off Golf Course Island redo out past the five-year mark, because fundamentally, it's in good shape today. And what I had heard our outgoing COO talk about is a very elaborate redo of that property. And if that proposal were to go forward, and this is gonna come back to the higher level, but I'm just using it as an example. If that project were to go forward, there is no way to avoid going through a rezoning. Just can't do it, with, with the concepts that I hear shared with us. And if you're going through a rezoning, that's three years, after the board authorizes it, okay? And so I'm trying to offer to us all that when we're thinking about these projects, we've gotta lay, we've gotta lay in a year for PrAC to do their deal, and three years for a rezoning for these projects like what's contemplated at CGI. Well, that's four years in a five-year capital budget. That project isn't gonna happen in the next five years. And, and I, and I want us to be thinking about, how do we account for that in our capital budgeting process? Because, you know, if you're going to go through a PCR plan, you're looking at that kind of timeframe. And how do you take, how do you account for that in Triple RF? If you, once the board makes that commitment to do that, what are we doing with Triple RF? Because in all likelihood, it's five years before you break ground. And I think this is important, I, I don't expect an answer, I just put it, I want it up on this, up on the, okay?
I don't have an answer.
I didn't, I didn't think anybody did.
But, but it does raise a question, though, that I think applies to a lot of capital projects that I've seen, okay? And that is, do we have to approve a project to start that work? Because we tend to approve a project and say, okay, let's do that project, $2 million. And then it's three years before we ever start it. And we've tied up $2 million for three years just sitting there.
Right.
I'm saying maybe the approval ought to be after it gets through the process, but that's not for tonight.
Well, except it is for tonight, in that it does, no, it does come into how we budget. And it seems to me that rather, in the past, and this is a point that Director Jeff Jack has come up with, the board will say yes, and it's gone. I mean, it's, 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 it's the snowball going down the hill, instead of saying, send this to PrAC and let them do their job. And it seems to me that going forward, when we have something like CGI, the, the first decision point can't be go like the engineer, do, do, start drawing site plan stuff, it needs to be the first decision point, key decision point is, hey, PrAC, go look at this capital asset, and tell us if it works under your process. Because they have a process for working that through. And that needs to be, so that way, we've started the process, but there's no promise of what year the new facility is gonna open. And that needs to be part of our capital budget process, so that we don't have a membership expecting that this facility is gonna be renewed and reopened in this year, because it ain't happening at CGI that quickly. The other thing I want, I want to somehow to get into this process this year is, we talked about efficiencies of facilities. That building up on Lake Newport doesn't work. I have tried to use it, Matt, for any kind of meetings, and I don't know which of those walls are structural, and which of those rules we can eliminate, but that building doesn't work. And if we're gonna enhance the revenue we get from that building, what, Tetra, Lake House, whatever you want to call it this week, we need to incorporate somewhere in this budget, I don't know if it's a capital item or what, but an examination of, how do we improve the interior of that space so that it's a more attractive rental? Because it ain't. I've tried, and it's just, there is not, except for that front room, it's not a usable building. And, and I don't know where that goes. Does it go in capital? Does it go in Triple RF? Where, where does that examination go? But I think I want to put a pin in that and say, come back to me with something on that. Because, again, I've tried to rent that space out for various and sundry meetings, for condo association, membership meetings, and other kind of meetings, and I don't get the sense that we're raising millions of dollars from the rental of that facility. We're getting some money, don't get me wrong, but I'm just wondering if there isn't some efficiencies we can realize by changing the interior configuration. And that's gonna be an architect, that's gonna be a structural engineer, that's gonna be somebody looking at that building and telling me how we can enhance the using, the use of that building. And then, my own hobby horse on that is, I've had conversations with the guys in Little League about having a year-round indoor batting cage at, next to Field One, at, and the number I get is 100,000. So is that CARF? Is that Triple RF? Is it operating? What do we do?
It would, none, it would be the cost of the, of the baseball teams to do that.
Well, they, they would, they would contribute, but it's our land, and it would be our asset. And one of the reasons it's interesting is, it could be used for, as a shelter for, or as a gathering's place for our camps in the summer. So it would be something that we reduce.
If, if you, if you, if you book that at, at a park, it would be CARF.
Okay. All right. That's all I have on that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Other things on capital stuff, I'll go right into cash, we'll keep things rolling along.
I just have one thing. I mean, thinking about this role of the community survey, and the way we think about capital planning just in general, the, the kinds of things that are coming relative to our facilities, particularly aquatics, but I'll just say in general because of age, are gonna require substantially more strategy and sophisticated thought process, both in financial forecasting and strategy, and frankly, in member needs and wants and timing. So we're talking about significant dollars to upgrade facilities between now and pick a year, 10, 20, 30 years from now. And so the idea of, are we keeping our model? Are we just enhancing what we have? Like, what are we gonna do? That's gonna be a significant thing. And we're getting, we're all talking about customer service and what our members want, you know, and those sorts of things. I don't want to lose sight of that. So in terms of the capital planning, it can be very easy, I think. What I've seen happen is a whole, a whole number, I've got an idea, can we fund this? Can we fund this? We do one pool here, we do a project there. I haven't seen the whole thing stitched together from either a service delivery standpoint or a financial model standpoint yet. And I'm very much looking forward to the fourth quarter of this year and into next year, looking very thoughtfully about that strategy and building that into next year.
And that's one of the questions on the survey. Because we give the survey respondents, and oh, by the way, if you're watching and you haven't filled out the survey, would you please fill out the survey? Because one of the questions is, we have three operating models going forward, that we ask the respondents to respond to, about how we operate our pools. And there are three models, and we say to people, which model is most appealing to you? So that's another place where the survey comes back and tells, gives us direction.
Yep. Right. One other thing before I go to cash on capital, okay? There, there is about a $50,000 or $60,000 item added to the budget next year, because we'll do a reserve study. And that reserve study is going to tell us, and probably shock us, with what the cost of replacement and repair is now going to be with all the new inflationary types of things that have happened, okay? The last time we did one of these studies was in 2019. And that's, we've experienced much higher costs today than we saw them provide us in 2019. We expect to see that to grow even more next year. So that will also play a prominent role in the capital side of this, but that, that'll take, it's probably a six-month effort, they do, in the middle of next year.
And that's required by statute.
That's required.
We have to do that.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Should we talk about cash?
I'll take all you got.
It's my favorite topic. Yeah, so, and just, so, we've said many times, I think, and I will say it again, you know, ours is in a very strong cash position. Some would say too strong, but that can never be, of course, eh? But I, I provided these slides on here just to give you an idea of, over time, how they fluctuate. And I, I just, I wanted to point out something here, and that is, on Triple RF, we have a required minimum. We cannot go below a minimum amount. That is a, that is a policy developed several years ago by folks in our, in RA. It's an important thing to do, because the last thing you want to be is a member of the board that has to recommend a special assessment. I mean, this kind of, it really gives you a lot of cover for major capital fixtures that have to take place during any period. So we keep somewhere in the three to four million range of cash available in case something dramatic happens. Above and beyond, yes?
Above and beyond the minimum.
Above and beyond what we fund every year.
And we fund at the minimum.
We fund at the required amount that Chris and his capital projects team says we need to do.
Yeah, it's the incremental, it's not the full amount, it's the incremental amount to keep it at, that, at or above it minimum.
Right, we're required to keep a 10-year average plus 10% separate. And, and what that does is it, it, it kind of levels out the way your cash sits in that account, okay? And the top graph shows that over time, it goes up and down, up and down, but it holds pretty steady, okay? When you look at operating cash below it, you'll see that operating cash kind of jumps all over the place, okay? And particularly the last three years. It's grown dramatically the last three years. We have no minimum policy on cash reserves. We have, I mean, this is probably the most cash we've had ever, I believe, at the end of last year. So fiscal committee is looking at whether or not we should have a reserve policy. And it doesn't mean we should have less or anything, but should we have something that to kind of, you know, as a, as, that, that we then can, I mean, the main reason for that is that the board needs to know if they want to do things, if they want to enhance certain services, if they want to buy down an assessment, if they want to ask Mac to go out and create a new position or something, okay? That you've got the funds to do it, okay? So we want to create a way that we can measure that better, because right now, we've just got this big pool that sits out there. So we're gonna work on some rules around that, and, and what it means, and then, and get that obviously approved through our group, and then brought to the board, and they'll review it and decide whether they think that's a policy that they want us to implement or not. But I, I, I do want to bring up the, the, quickly, the, the buy-down of assessments we've done the last couple of years, okay? We have used in the last two years, a million and a half dollars to keep the assessment where it is, at 763. Doesn't, it doesn't mean it's flat, it means it doesn't grow as much, okay? That is not something that's sustainable. You're gonna run out of money, okay? I've said, you know, if, if, if Mac hits his plan right on the numbers, our cash will go down a million dollars this year, because that's what we planned. We gave a million dollars to buy down the assessment. And so we just have to be a little careful, we, we can do that, okay? We hope he hits his plan right on target, okay? But the thing is, we can't buy it down and then hope he doesn't make his numbers, okay? That's not the kind of way you want to, you want to run it. So I would just, one of the things that fiscal is going to care about as we go through this summer, okay, is that we're not trying to design a budget that's gonna require cash to balance it. Now, that may happen, but it's something that we, you know, are going to work hard at picking at the budget and identifying things to say, should we or shouldn't we, and, because we don't want to do that. But I throw it out there to people who have lived through this a few times, and people who are just hearing about it, and what they think about that way of running the budget.
So let me ask a question, and then I'll hand it off to my colleagues. There is a school of thought that says that effectively, by generating a $7 million cash surplus, that... that we set the assessment too high. And we have been taking more of our members' money than we should have been taking this year. And that, to quote one, one group of politicians, we need to give people their money back in setting this year's assessment. Help me understand the pros and cons of that approach.
I think one other factor though, John, as we get into why we might be running surpluses, especially the last couple of years, there, there are a couple of significant factors that may not be replicatable. So for example, last year we ran an enormous surplus. We were minus a director of environmental and the CEO. Those two positions alone add up to several hundred thousand dollars, which is a noticeable impact to the budget. Now, some of the things that we've also identified, yes, we have been running to the good, you know, to, on the revenue side. Um, and we have committed to take a look at, at some of those things. I'll head it to Tom here in a second. But I think in terms of the question of, you know, have, have we been running positive? And then what to do about that? I think we should be careful that those were anomalous, potentially anomaly years.
But they were seven million dollars worth, Matt.
You might want to point out that we also have the CAT fund, which was the result of basically the money we got from wetlands that were created by virtue of the renewal of certain streams that resulted in the creation of those wetlands. And those wetlands have resulted in the sale of benefits that have resulted in our getting some money. And so, you know, as I understand, we have a CAT fund that now has a million dollars.
Right, but that the use of that money is only to restore the stream should they need, should they need repairs for the, from twenty twenty, ten years out. So it's restricted, it's very restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in an investment account.
So that's not part of it.
It's not part of it. But in that, in the surplus from last year, we did receive four hundred thousand dollars that's restricted for stream education, mitigation, et cetera. So that's part of that million dollar surplus that was added last year. There, so there's, there's other items, you, you just can't say that, yeah, we had a million dollar surplus. You have to kind of look into the numbers.
It's, it's like a discussion that Becky has about liquidity. It's, do you have enough liquidity to, as you're moving into a downturn in the economy? Probably not. You may, it's adequate now, but it's, or conversely, as you're coming out, do you have too little when things are looking good? And it's, it's a balancing game. I think the point that, uh, needs to be emphasized, which Dave has made a couple of times, is we're moving into a period where we are, we for the next, probably for the foreseeable future, are going to be spending a lot more money because of the age of our existing facilities than we have in the past. And
The increased costs.
And the increased cost, which is very difficult to anticipate just given, you know, um, the relative size of our, of our asset structure plus the, um, the fact of just inflation and people are moving out of that business. But the other, I'll just leave that there. It's, it's just more complicated than, we got seven million dollars and
By the way, just, I mean, that seven million does not include CAT funds. Do not include it.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, let me try to answer John's question or at least comment on John's question.
Help me answer it.
Comment on John's question, okay? And, and I'll preface by admitting, I mean, RA underspends their budget. I mean, we, one time in my experience, we overspent the budget once. And when we underspend it, we tend to underspend it by hundreds of thousands of dollars. It happens. Okay? I think the last few years have been fairly unique. Okay? In that we designed a whole bunch of, we, 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 we looked at places we had to improve. We, we had to have, add people in covenants. We had, we added some people in communications. We, we knew we had to do things. We, we elected to hire an environmental director. There are places we needed to do. So we built a budget a couple of years ago to include those things in it. We wound up having difficulty hiring those spots. A lot of them. I mean, we probably ran last year at least ten or twelve people under plan the entire year.
Savings of six hundred.
So did we, did we, did we overcharge the members? No, because the plan was to hire those people. I, I can't build a budget saying, Mac, go hire those people, but I'm not going to put the money in the budget. Okay? I mean, if, if he's got permission to hire, put that money in the budget. Right? Can't hire them. And just, it's not quite now, this year. I mean, if, year to date, we're way under budget. We're still slow in hiring people. Did we charge too much? Not for what we gave Mac the rules to go do, that, from a fiscal perspective. If, if you approve a budget that says, add these people, add these positions and do all these things, fiscal says you got to have a budget of this much money. The fact that we're under because we're not hiring people is not because we overbudgeted.
But that's not seven million dollars worth.
Seven million. Oh, no, that's, well, seven million, I mean, we didn't grow seven million in one year. We have, that's how much money we have.
We've accumulated.
Accumulated over.
That's an accumulated surplus.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Since two thousand fifteen.
So
But it's not, it's not a true surplus, you just can't spend it. It's, it's restricted.
Some of it's restricted.
Some of it is restricted. But most of it isn't.
Correct.
Most of it is or isn't?
Yeah, I'm sorry. John Kennedy and then Kent? John Kennedy, can I add something? You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, uh, did you call on me? I'm, I'm having a little trouble.
Mr. Kennedy, I called on you first.
I guess, uh, as I know, John also had his hand up. I, uh, I guess I wanted to push back a little bit on, on the fact that, that maybe this past year was an anomaly. And, and I, you know, I focus a lot, I guess, on the revenue side. And I think, I, you know, I call it the, the kind of truth and budgeting concept is what I'm getting at. And I just think when we see a level of revenue being budgeted in any area for a current year that's less than the revenue that we actually realized in the previous year, to, to me, in a perfect world, that would trigger some kind of automatic review where you'd say, you know, I want to take a hard look at that number in terms of, you know, is that a realistic number? And I mention that because we've consistently, and I've kind of tracked some of this. We've consistently under budgeted revenue in the three, for lack of a better term, non-assessment recreation areas. And I'm talking about camps, tennis and aquatics. And I, I think it's fair to say that that's increased the assessment rate for all our members to a, you know, a level higher than it needed to be. And as of the end of April, we were showing actual revenue exceeding the budget by, in, in those three areas combined was coming to over two hundred K, uh, in terms of actual over budget. So I, I think that has an effect, obviously, on the assessment rate. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything less than good faith efforts. But I, I, I just think when we're looking at a budget estimate for less revenue than we realized last year, in, in a perfect world, I think that should, should trigger some kind of, let, let's look at that and be sure that that's a realistic revenue budget number. I, I just wanted to get that out.
Okay, this, this is John Kennedy. I've been suffering from a cold, so hopefully you can hear me. I, I just wanted to, uh, question the seven million dollar figure. I don't think we have anywhere near operating reserves of seven million. That's totally ludicrous, in my opinion. I think that might be the balance of certain amounts of cash at the end of the year on the unaudited statements, but get us to track out of that the deferred revenue. So we collected two or three million in, in assessments early for twenty, for, for the following year, that should be taken out of that. Also, the budget transfer was not, was not affected on the statements that this thing came off of. The budget transfer of a million dollars. It was not made until after the year end statements. And that's something that we'll be bringing up in our study of the, uh, triple RF and CARF funding. So I think it's, uh, still a lot. It's probably two to three million, somewhere in that range, but it's definitely not, not seven million. It could, it could even be less than that because the fund balances for, uh, the, uh, stream litigation. I, I haven't, mitigation, I guess, the was, uh, something was happening on some of the statements I saw. So I'm waiting for the audited statements to come out and reconcile it all out. The, the other thing is, is, uh, not to cause any panic or anything, but you could interpret that we don't have enough money in, uh, as of the end of the year, as the end of last year, in the minimum balance for triple RF. Because, because if you take the, the, uh, triple RF cash of two point three million plus the investments of three point three million, that's five point six, five point seven million. Okay, well, we had a, the minimum balance was three point eight millions. Oh, we're, we're covered. Well, just imagine had there been no carryover projects from twenty twenty-two into twenty, twenty twenty-three. The carryover projects was three million. So you need to subtract that out of the cash because it's already earmarked. And, uh, had we had spent it all, we'd be short by over a million dollars in the minimum balance. So it's all a matter of interpretation. Some people interpreted, well, we don't have to worry about the carryforwards and take it out. I interpreted, yes, we do. And so then we're short. Other people interpreted, no, we just make the calculation, we're okay. Things to consider.
Thank you.
So seven million is not a reserve number. I don't know if that's what John was suggesting, that it was.
No, I wasn't saying it's a reserve number. I'm not even.
It's the cash number on the balance sheet at the end of the year.
I, I still disagree, I still disagree with that.
Okay, well, we're not going to take these people through that inflection size then.
Oh, come on.
Would you like to go through that?
No.
Tom, you have to give me, what's the operating cash for the end of the year?
I mean, that is, but John's right. Two million of that's collected in advance. And there's, there's other factors that bring it back down to three or four.
That, that graph is measuring the amount of operating cash held by RA at the end of the year. Okay? Fiscal has to look at a reserve policy to figure out, do we want to have a reserve policy? Do we want to carry a minimum amount? Okay?
Of cash.
Of cash. Okay? And things you have to consider are things that are restricted. For example, you don't include those. Okay? You don't include deferred revenue. You don't include deferred compensation. Okay? You don't include, uh, CAT funds. Okay? There's a lot of math that goes into getting to that number. Okay? This is not meant to be that exercise. This is to show you how much cash sits on the books at the end of the year. So I, I don't disagree with John's comments, but those are the cash results at the end of the year. And by cash, that's not in there. Okay?
I, I disagree. I disagree with that. I agree, those are the numbers on the report, but that is not the cash and operating.
Okay.
I, I think from On the fourteenth, yeah. I think from a CEO perspective, the reason that I was interested in raising this issue is I'm not sure how well known it is that we've been using one time monies to talk about buying down the assessment. There are people in this room that know that. Um, and everybody knows we're running a surplus. And there's a lot of questions about should we be running a surplus? How should we evaluate that? We certainly committed, and I committed, we're going to be doing some things differently to look at why we're running surpluses and actuals and some of those things in the budget process. I think the policy question that's coming up is, are we getting into a habit of assuming we're going to run a surplus and buy the assessment down? Either as a matter of, you know, politics and being concerned about the assessment going up by too much in any one year. I don't mean politics like you all winning elections, I just mean that's, that's a thing we're doing. Or should we be really looking at the true cost of service and not assuming we're going to be running cash surplus every single year?
There's another way that I experience this. Dave, in that the program managers, when they come in and give us revenue projections, tend to be conservative. Now, that was understandable during the pandemic, but that's over. And because no program manager wants to have a situation where their revenues didn't hit the mark because that can be a source of criticism of their performance. And so to the extent, I will be interested to see to the extent that our revenue projections from programs were conserve, more conservative than actual experience. Because that could be a source of our surplus. If we're saying, if we come in, because my partners play this game every year. Okay? We will go out to my partners and go, what's your expected revenue for the next year? You know? And then, and Mr. Champ knows this, in my business, it's, you know, it's a POYA exercise. Okay? You're pulling that, that number out of your ear. That no one can project what they're going to do in my business in the next year. It, you know, it comes. Whatever happens, happens. And so as the net result is, my partners tend to be extraordinarily conservative in their projections of revenue. And because nobody wants to have a shortfall in revenue projections. And I think we need to be sensitive to that process that we are getting revenue projections out of our programs that are lower. Mr. Deal is looking at his watch. And it is, and it is not ten minutes after nine. Do we have a lot more to go through?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's get to it. Mr. Kennedy, if you can bear with us.
I'll get back to you.
Go ahead. I'm not sure what John wanted to speak to. Do you want to move on to the remainder of the discussion point?
Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, I wanted, I want to move on to the next slide, assessment.
Okay. Who's got that?
I, I'm going to handle this. You know, one of the things that I wanted to talk about is the relationship of the assessment, the value that people see and what they pay. So what do, what, what do we get for our money as members in RA? Whether it's seven forty, seven sixty-three or whatever the number is. What I am very clearly hearing from everyone tonight is there is a relationship between, are we overcharging or having, you know, what are we getting for our money? And, and should we be, um, how are we thinking about the assessment vis a vis what, what you get for that? And I think the reason I wanted to start this, just having listened to the dialogue, particularly the last half hour or so, is, you know, the flip side to that is if you, if you, if you're off on your revenue and suddenly you're down three or five percent in an organization that runs as lean and mean as we do, meaning almost all sunk costs like staff salaries, you've got a pretty significant budgetary problem unless you've got the cash surplus that Dave kept pointing out. So I think a lot about the role of being, I'll say conservative, maybe not conservative the, the way we have been, but nonetheless, not wanting to be wildly off and then having a, a bigger problem, you know, on our hands. In terms of the overall assessment and some of the, um, the policy issues, I've been thinking a lot about the role of the base assessment and what amenities are included in that base assessment. And I very much want to have a discussion going into this year's budget process about whether or not recreational amenities, particularly aquatics, but maybe racket sports as well, should be included in the base amendment, I mean, in the base assessment. And the reason I think that is worthwhile coming up, I'm looking at the kinds of assessment increases or potentially, again, looking at the actuals and revenue projections and the variable factors, I will just say, including inflationary rates and things. And what our next year's assessment might be. We projected, I think, last year for some folks that participated in a similar discussion that even if we were to give away those recreational passes to all members, the hit to the assessment would be less than thirty bucks and probably more in the low, low to mid twenties. We, we talk about that kind of assessment increase routinely for other sorts of factors or, or services. In, in my travels so far, everybody wants to talk about the value and what they're getting for their assessment. Whether they use it or not, I believe every person in RA would see value in, in the aquatics. What I hear a lot is, I pay seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and I still can't use the pool. Um, and the little known fact in that is that somewhere between, I'll look over to Tom, sixty, seventy percent of simply opening the door at the pool is already subsidized by the general membership. The, the amount of pass sales does not even come close to making it a profitable enterprise for the association. So the general members are already paying for the pools. They just can't use them. So I think having a discussion about the assessment and what's in the assessment is a pretty important thing. I was also thinking about some comments that came up, and a couple of you've participated in this, but Sarah was particularly wanted to talk about it. The, the idea of, we'll call it the country club model, but please don't evoke that image, you know, to, to mean anything other than, you know, your base assessments get you access to facilities, but a lot of the profit margins can be driven by things that the members do, tournaments, special events, you know, and those other sorts of things. And what Sarah was really getting at is if we think of ourselves as providing those kinds of amenity structures as part of the base assessment, the membership may see more value in what their assessment goes for. And then looking at how to serve them better, you know, and what those revenue sources look like. So I, I, I would like to just throw out there that it seems to come up a lot. Um, you know, I'll hear people say, well, we should just decide all the stuff we want and figure out what the assessment is. But I've not talked to one person yet that has suggested that the actual number in November is going to cause anyone involved to kind of go like this and decide what to do at that point. And what I am sort of trying to aim for is to what extent should I be thinking now? And are you all thinking about, are we going to contemplate a no increase budget? So that came up for me in my second month here, and we were already at meeting, you know, let's call it nine or ten out of twelve. And in no way suggesting that, that wouldn't be a, a relevant discussion to have, but maybe at meeting nine or ten, probably not. You know, especially accounting for inflation, it probably would have meant layoffs for staff. So if, if I should be thinking about that, I'd like to know it. If I should be thinking, again, we hit this earlier, but not super clear answer. If there's a kind of maximum number that just simply is not palatable, it'd be good to have that out there. But the, the concept around talking about the assessment is when we think about how we generate money, and obviously we talked about the non-assessment revenue or whatever we may call it, just not monies that you pay a bill on January first. Um, it seems to me that that becomes the driving discussion point about RA. That's what people equate. I'm paying this money and I'm not getting value for it. Or my only interaction is with something that happened in covenants or something, which is, is really unfair. Um, but nonetheless, that's why I wanted to sort of bring it up and talk about that concept. I think we kind of hit the cash policy to death, but happy to take any more comments on that, too. So specifically, um, I would like to go ahead and study whether or not more amenities, whatever those look like are. And if there are ideas about that being a good or bad idea, I'd like to know it, you know, and any kind of big picture stuff. Getting into the specifics of, you know, because obviously we talked about passes and charging non-members more, that, that stuff, you know, is kind of granular at this point. So I'll stop there and if there are any thoughts on the assessment itself, I'd like to understand that.
So, so if I, if I'm Yeah, Jennifer?
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Um, I've been quiet, so I wanted to run down a list so that you guys, so it, I, I will end with what the question that Mac just asked, but I, um, so for twenty twenty-four, the things that I would like to see focused on are a, a plan, enough money in the budget to have a plan for the IT infrastructure, whatever that future plan is. Your plan. Um, an examination of the communications budget and kind of a public explanation to the membership because we've heard quite a bit about that budget over the last few years. And I, I think that the membership is confused. Um, I'd love to focus on land use. As you all know, it's a focus area for me even outside of RA. But we might need to, um, continue to outsource that until we can get some more definitive uh, plans in place, especially after the member survey. I'd love to, um, have enough money in the budget to do financial forecasting in the future. However, Mac, do you think that, that needs to happen internally, externally, how do you think that needs to happen? Hours since the board reduced them in two thousand and sixteen, especially in the shoulder hours, uh, like evening hours after um, members get home from work, um, that kids can still go. So I'd, I'd love to take a look at that. Uh, well, whatever you might need to do a, a true five-year capital improvement facilities plan. We might already have those, uh, but anything that you might need in addition to what we already have, I'd like to see included. Um, I would say that I'm pro member insurance fee. They can use our facilities, um, unless they, that they become members. Um, but I'm pro that and taking a look at it.
Director Jess, you broke up there for, you broke up there for a minute, so I'm not quite sure what you're pro or in favor of looking at.
Okay, sorry. The, I'm pro the non-member insurance fee that was talked about earlier in the evening. Um, you know, pay, pay your three or four hundred dollars or whatever a number is before you get to buy pool passes or buy tennis lessons or I'm pro, uh, taking a look at examining that. Would love for you to take a, a look at the staff conservative factor, or that's what I call it, but the turnover factor, whatever it is with staff, we're off year after year on staffing costs and, and that used to off, I think the assessment or make it hard to describe, um, why the assessment's as high as it is when we come in super positive on staff, staffing costs each year. Um, from an internal standpoint, I'd love for you to look at the disability insurance and make sure that the, um, senior leadership team can take advantage, full advantage of our disability insurance. Something I, um, looked at, um, when we were hiring Mac and, and I, it's something I'm worried about from a staff perspective. And also the 401K waiting period. Um, be arbitrarily long, um, before our staff can get in it. And I think that would be a way to retain staff, so we have less turnover. And then finally, on the current slide, what we're on, I am all for, um, trying to do like a recreation path members, um, without, you know, that, a, a, a fee, at least trying it out for a year. Um, we could use some of the excess, um, cash that we have. Really, no, Dave Kerr doesn't, doesn't like to have us do that, but I think that would be a great one-use, um, you know, type of expense to try it out, as long as we do a lot of promotion and communication to members and let's see what those, uh, facility numbers look like, um, after a year, and then we can evaluate it again. So my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Director Jess. Other members of the board have thoughts on assessments. A little bit of history. Um, Director Patrine may be able to verify what I'm about to say. There, there were a number of years where there was not a charge for using the pools for the membership. Um, Mr. Deal might be able to help me out on that, but I think that was for more than a decade that the cost, that when I first moved here in the eighties, there was a, there was a baseline charge, and then there was a pool charge, and the pool charge was several hundred dollars. It wasn't just thirty dollars. It was, you paid so much in, in January, and it was a hefty number. And then you paid a pretty decent sized number, and it was per person, uh, in the, or there was a family, a family number you could get to. And then the board, this board made a decision to say, no, we're already, when I pay that base number, I'm already paying for operating the pools. And yet I don't go unless I pay another one. And the board then made a decision to say, nope, we're going to have one charge. You're going to pay it in January and you get to use the pools. And then I can remember the CEO who was, who was in charge when this was reversed. And the justification for reversing is that we had a photo ID equipment that we had to buy. And in order to pay for that photo ID equipment, we had to charge every person a dollar number. That number was lower than it is now, but it was a dollar number. And slowly over time, that pool pass for the member became a revenue source. And it came to be seen as a revenue source. I'm all in favor of getting rid of that process. I mean, they're paying seven forty. That family ought to be able to use our pool without paying another nickel. If you want to charge three bucks that it costs us to produce the card, okay. I'm not going to, I'm not dying on that hill. But the idea that a family of four has to pay another hundred and twenty bucks to use our pools on our tennis courts fries my cookies. It just, it's just not right. And, and I want to see it gone. I, you know, they pay their seven sixty-three. They come in, they get their picture taken. Here's your pool pass. Have fun. And that's my philosophical approach.
So what would be the effect on that to renters? So, so just, I, I just want to get clarity on it. So landlord pays for, pays the, pays the, the dues. And then the renter would be able to go to the pool for free.
It's been paid.
That's fantastic for renters.
It is. Except for the fact that they're paying, that, that amount is being paid in the rent.
Oh, it's, well, yeah, I mean, I was a renter for eight years. I understand. Um, however, it's still a fairly negligible, negligible, um, charge for them, so, yeah. You, we, I'd support that.
I don't hear any dissent on that point.
Yeah, no, it's good. It has an impact. It's not, it's not material, but it is an impact. And, you know, if you forego that cost, whether it's fifteen to thirty, fifteen or thirty dollars per, it's something that it gets added to. It, it may, it may encourage people to use pools a great deal more. Super, absolutely super. That, the follow-on effect is what I think Jennifer is suggesting is, you know, you do weigh the costs and all of a sudden, instead of, we go back to the levels of two thousand and ten. When we had two hundred thousand people using the pools every year, we have a hundred thousand now. So we double the usage of the pools. What does that do to the oper- and the operating costs, except for the people costs, are, are there? What's going to increase?
Wh- whether the, whether we have two hundred or a hundred.
Fully staffed.
It was some costs.
Yep. But the, the variable is, are the, are the guards, are the lifeguards.
Right.
Because of the amount of time. If you expect to serve two hundred thousand people, you're going to have to leave, leave them open. Leave the pools open a great deal more than they may be now.
Sure. But on the fundamental point of the pool passes are part of it.
No problem.
Okay, I'm not hearing any dissent on that, Mr. CEO. You have a clear consensus.
Well, appreciate that. And I, Trevor's been trying to jump in here. I just, my point was, I think should examine what's in the base assessment, and there may be other ideas, just if there are things that members are paying extra for that could be built into the base assessment. I just throw out aquatics and had my first chance to go down to one of the pools today. I ran down to Ridge Heights to see what that would look like midday and swam some laps and stuff. So I think as those ideas come up, I know our membership would appreciate it, um, from my perspective.
I want a voice of caution note. We are five people here tonight.
Six. Jennifer.
Ah, six people, okay. We're three or none. And just a caution. So to say that we are unanimous, you cannot.
I can say that of the people who are here, which is what I said. Miss Turkle Tom? You have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in, in, in several years that I've been participating with fiscal, um, a lot of the decisions and directions that are made early on in the budget get reversed when we get near approving the budget, because then all of a sudden, the assessment fee creeps up too high. So it's great that all these ideas are being talked about now, but there, there does need to be a level of buy-in and commitment that we're going to accept that maybe fifty or a hundred dollars of the assessment fee is going to go up just by maybe incorporating what everyone thinks is a great idea of the pool passes. Like, I feel like there needs to be good consensus and, and, and buy-in on that now because a lot of those decisions get reversed in November.
Okay.
That's, that's really the objective of tonight's meeting is to talk through the big issues and then go back and then really sit down and hash out the numbers. And to see what, what's, what's possible, what you're, what people are willing to do. If it ends up being, you know, increasing the assessment by a hundred dollars a year, I'm sure there are a significant number of people that would say, what's the problem? There will be another significant number of people that will scream to high heaven because they don't use any, any of the facilities and don't see a way to be paying anything.
Right. Well, I remember just, I keep, I keep coming back to this and Mac has heard it too many times. I, I, I have the Tip O'Neill rule. And Tip O'Neill, for those of us who grew up in Massachusetts, Tip would tell anybody who listens that no matter what you do, no matter where you are, thirty-five percent of the people will be against you, no matter what you do. And if, if, if you're going to be driven by public opinion, that number's got to be a hell of a lot higher than thirty-five percent. Um, and so i- i- is it possible that there'll be a couple of people coming to that podium and telling us what fools we are? Um, yeah, and it's okay. I can live with it. When, when I get forty percent of our sixty-three thousand people telling me they don't like what I'm doing, I'll start paying attention. Mr. Deal then Mr. Kerr?
I think Mac already alluded that the members are already subsidizing seventy percent of the expenses. You know, the other thirty is the revenue that they now pick up in the assessment. So they're already paying for seventy percent of the operational.
So we let them go into the pool up to their waist? Seventy percent?
They get, they get to go up to the chest.
Seventy percent, okay. Well, some of us, some of us have more below than above. Mr. Kerr?
And, you know, you know, buying down the assessment with cash is not a good idea. But using cash for objectives can be a very good idea sometimes. And, you know, you can look at this in a longer term fashion and say to yourself, if we're selling four hundred thousand dollars worth of pool passes, okay? May, maybe we start to use some cash to help manage that over the next three years to get people to gradually get it to zero. Meaning in other words, you take it away, I mean, as you, you, you take, you, you give them the pools, you include it in the assessment, but you use cash to feather that for three years. So you don't feel the, the impact right away. You don't do it in one year. You spend it over three or four years because you got cash to do it.
Good idea. I see Mr. Butler's hand raised.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what President Farrell was talking about with the initial roll-in of the pool fees back in like nineteen ninety-two, I think. It was a very bold move. At, at that time, the assessment was probably three hundred and seventy bucks and they raised it sixty dollars to do that. Um, as John alluded to, we gradually over time did increase the pass fees. Originally it was like five dollars for several years for adults, three dollars for kids. And part of the reason for that was that there was a lot of blowback from people who don't use the pools, say, why am I paying for the pools? So I'm just throwing out, that out there is a very small cautionary tale that while I'm, I am not against rolling the pool fees in, be prepared for the blowback of the, as Director Patrine alluded to, what used to be two hundred thousand people using our pools is now a hundred thousand. Um, of getting some pushback on the fact that, hey, I don't use the pools, why am I paying for them? I just throw that out there as a little bit of history.
Okay, Mac, anything else on this?
Nope. If we could jump on, I think if we're generally done talking about the assessment. Um, I did want to run through some things that I have identified that I am planning on studying with staff, and I want to just speak to them quickly. I know the hour is late, um, but I think there's some things you should all just be prepared for and just know a little bit more about. Um, I'll try to go through this very quickly. We, we've been spending some time in, um, recreation, looking at, uh, some things that we think are important. So for example, we've been looking at, um, some salary survey work. Um, and I want to speak to that in broader sense, just from an HR standpoint in a minute, too. But, um, everybody knows we've been discussing lifeguards and or some of the more specialty services and where we're at each year. That obviously has an impact to our ability to stay open later, you know, be open earlier, uh, and just be fully staffed, generally speaking. The other kinds of things, um, you know, thinking about the, uh, increases in certain programs, you know, or camp staffing or some of those things, they're going to come up. We're seeing an increase in demand. There's a corresponding increase in revenue to expenses, so even though it might be a wash monetarily, um, we're expecting to see increases in both kinds of line items there. The one I wanted to highlight here, we are looking at, um, how we want to be more active in the community. And what I mean by that is, one of my observations is, we ask everybody to come to us. And this building, I don't find to be terribly member-serving. It reminds me of the nineteen eighties, well, because it is a nineteen eighties office building, suburban parking lot. It's not even embedded in the middle of the community. So even though we've only been at a place like the farmer's market at Lake Anne last four or five weeks, we're seeing a lot of people on a weekly basis. I would like to explore some seasonal dollars and or some additional money for what it would take to do more work out in the community, um, along, in, in other locations, member services, kinds of things. Um, and that, we're also looking at point-of-sale operations, so people could do more business with the association. Right now, we're, we're basically in information flow. Um, we're, we're working on the credit card fee is really what's happening. We're doing some work with fiscal, and then Laura Kowalski is working on what the acquisition of any necessary technology to swipe credit cards and all that. But that's aggressively moving forward. The potential impact of the budget would be if we want to be more out there, what is the staffing resource to accomplish that physical bodies on site? But from my perspective, I would really like to see us more in the community, not a, a virtual presence that's hard to use in an office building that's barely inside RA. Um, the financial services part, this was been alluded to. I want to speak to the idea of adding, um, a chief, a chief financial officer to the association a little bit. Here, here's what I see coming. Um, we're doing this community survey, uh, work that's coming. We're doing this community survey work that's coming up. That will undoubtedly lead to a significant strategy conversation around what the future of our facilities are. I'm already projecting that we will want to have a very robust financial strategy discussion, including a potential debt issuance around how long it will take and the money that will be needed to fix or to upgrade or to add new facilities. I see that kind of leadership need in the community to talk about that kind of financial strategy as necessary and additive to the current financial services that we are offering, which is in no way to impugn the financial work we're doing now. I think if we want to go and talk to the community about a significant thing like a debt issuance and the financial strategy that comes with that, that's a significant body of work for the finance department, helping myself, helping the board, and then being out in the community. So more to come on that, but I'm moving forward on what that will look like.
And I think you've heard from this entire board supporting that idea. I have not heard a board member say, that's a bad idea. So before you leave this page, I keep saying this and I keep getting no heads nodding, but in talking to some of my friends who run recreational facilities through their condominium, they use the J-2 program. And for those of you who don't know, J-2 program gives a work visa to people who don't, who aren't US citizens, and they come and they work for a season, and they get to stay for a period of time after the season is over. And it is a major source of employees for condominiums that have pools where lifeguards are required. I know of a couple of instances where that's true. And I happen to know of a retailer on Nantucket who uses the J-2 program extensively, and they're only looking to hire four or five people. And so I've gotten a lot of resistance on that. But before we spend a whole lot of time trying to compete in the current market, I would hope that we would explore that, that a labor market that doesn't require quite the same level of compensation that the local labor market does. And, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I would hope that we would explore it before we give up on it.
I'd like to comment on that if I may.
Sure.
I understand that that program has been cut back very sharply.
It's still there, though. I know it's being used right now.
It has been cut back very sharply, and there have been employers who have been looking for people to come and have been unable to obtain them because they haven't received the permission to bring them.
Lovely. We haven't looked at it.
I'm just giving a cautionary note, that's all.
And we haven't looked at it, and it's, to me, in a tight labor market where there's a decreasing demographic in the relative age level, you know, you're talking 18 to 25, you know, that demographic is going down. So looking at other areas is important.
Yeah, maybe I can wrap that into, if we go to the next slide, I think this is where I have some, the general HR. Yep, there we go. Generally speaking, I mentioned earlier when I looked at cost centers, but I'll go ahead and add it here. The ways in which we recruit, the ways in which we invest in our staff, I mean, the greatest asset any community service organization has is the human capital. And that is always true. And thinking about how we're investing in our employees and organizational development, professional training, succession planning, how those investitures help the community overall in better service provision and allow us to be a much more sophisticated organization. I'm thinking a lot about what that looks like, and there could be a budgetary impact there. The other thing, of course, we've talked about staff attrition. I think we should be talking about setting aside some money for some type of salary comp survey and what that might look like going forward. So though we tend to hit some items as they kind of hit us, like, wow, we're going to have a serious member-facing problem if we don't have lifeguards, like, for one, right? Or we have this thing, you know, thing comes up. I am equally concerned about internal operations. So as we add new services, are we adding the right kind of support services, whether that's HR, IT, legal, although Tony will tell you he loves to do things, you know, here as his own show. But in general, I like to keep my eye on the ball, on the totality of how all of those systems work together. And I think we would be penny wise and pound foolish to not be thinking about that human capital. And we are about to lose through retirement a number of longstanding community resources. And people know, they know how to pull the levers, they know where all the services are and all those things. Bringing in those new people, it would be much better if we trained from within and then also just increased the skill sets and knowledge around leadership management, strategic decision-making and all those things. So I want to talk to you all about some of those dollars. And before Jennifer says it, yes, I'm aware that we haven't always spent all those monies in a particular line item. It will never be my goal to allow that to happen. I think we should be investing in our staff. So we are looking at ways to, you know, be efficient with that money, but nonetheless, make it worthwhile for us. IT's come up a couple of times tonight. I don't think I need to regurgitate this because I've said it several times. I do intend to, I would like to bring somebody in-house. I'm looking at the financial impacts of that. Of course, we have two separate contracts. We have the virtual CIO, and then we have a support contract. I would like to look at not just what it looks like to have a management person that is more integrated with the senior leadership team, but also whether or not we have all of the right people, support people. So if we keep, as you add services, I think anyone IT would tell you, if you don't keep up with the amount of people in that group, I think that you'll lag behind, and then you start to see the service problem external facing. And I don't know whether that will yield, hey, we don't have the right, you know, people in the right positions, or it's a resourcing issue, but I want to study it.
Do we, Mac, in this area, is this where we start talking about having that integration function, realizing that it's going to take several years to get fully integrated with all of our different silos of applications?
Yeah.
Is this where, is this, we start to like throw, reserve some money in that for that function?
So I think there's two parts to that. There's a hardware part, but I'm thinking about just the internal systems analysis as compared to normal day-to-day functionality. So, you know, we have, computer goes down, I can't get, like, the camera doesn't work right, or, you know, any of these things that are going on. We currently have two FTEs and the virtual CIO. For an organization of 105 people, that there's a lot of scurrying around, you know, which leaves less time to be strategizing about how to go work with different departments on which platforms could integrate better from an IT standpoint. So it ended up all getting lumped into the website project. But yes, we should probably talk about some of the hardware and other stuff as well.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines, you and I have had conversations, and I've had it with Director Johnson, is that we've got a series of applications, and they're kind of specific to the department, and there's not a whole lot of cross-communication between those applications. And there's some concern about, well, do we want to spend the time or the money to enable those applications, A, to talk to each other, or B, to have a common database that they are all working off of? And with the kind of money, the surplus that we're dealing with right now, that's, it strikes me, whenever I get a windfall, either personally or at the firm, that would be the time for us to, and not that this is a windfall, but it's kind of like a windfall, that would be the time to invest in a bigger deal. And it strikes me that that kind of integration that Director Johnson has talked about needs to happen, it's not going to happen in one year, I understand that, but it needs to happen over the next several years if we're going to meet the expectations of our membership regarding their interaction with us. And I would hope that in putting the budget together, we start setting money aside or something that starts us down that road of integration.
Yeah, John, I wanted to thank you for bringing that up because I saw this bullet, and that was my first thought, was to take the opportunity to make an open plea that it was, we need to go through this process to start to, you know, put a sum of substance towards integrating our IT systems. The opportunities there, it sounds like this is a limited window in which we'll have this much revenue. It makes sense to start a, to really start the process. I know, you know, after a number of conversations with Joe, the virtual CIO, that he understands what needs to happen and that a plan can be put together in fairly short order to start the process of making it happen.
The only thing I would push back ever so slightly in this area is, I would hate to handcuff the future leader of this department in, on a path or a direction
Sure.
that they don't have a say in, right? I apologize for the college football reference, it's, I love it tremendously. So it's like putting the head football coach in before the athletic director is named, right? Like, you are handcuffing that athletic director to make the decisions for his department moving forward, and that can be really substantial. So while I don't disagree on the idea that we need it, it's just the idea of what flows first.
Where I'm trying to come from is, is my understanding that maybe it's a misunderstanding, that there's a certain resistance because we have databases that don't talk to each other, and it's going to be expensive to either create a new database that they all talk to, or to enable our databases to work with each other. And that's an expensive exercise to get through? Well, let's get started.
Yeah, one of our biggest problems is
During the next biennium, I mean, that's two out of the next three years that we're talking about.
Yeah.
And I agree with Director Barrett, the timing of who does what first, but this is a two-year budget. And it seems to me that that hunk of cash can be inserted here, and how we implement it, I leave to our CEO, but a commitment that says, we're not going to let the fact that we have three or four different databases get in the way. If we have to spend money to write the program to make those databases talk to each other, then that's what we do.
Yeah, one of our biggest problems is that we don't have what's called single sign-on. You have, it requires multiple logins to get into the various applications on the same website. And, you know, just to try to help alleviate some of your concerns, I can't imagine a full-time CIO would come in and have an issue with trying to fix that problem. This is a, it's a fairly basic problem. And to use another analogy, you know, if I'm a NASCAR driver and I walk out and I see four flat tires on my car, I know that that's my first problem, and there's no, every driver is going to see that that's the problem. So we have to address that soon.
And I think you've told me that single sign-on is a priority for you going forward within the next sometime frame, but a short timeframe. Okay. Anything else on this page?
Okay, I think we got one more. Failure to detect my microphone. It's cut me off. There we go. I put some general information on this slide. One of the things I've been studying is, and thinking quite a bit about, the idea around siloing, how to make the sum worth more than the whole of its parts, and how all of our systems are integrated and working together. So I mentioned, you know, staff retention and salary and benefits, but I'm also thinking about some of these other fairly significant, you know, input factors. We've already hit a few of them, like the insurance and inflationary factors and more of the fiscal stuff. But the one I would like to really particularly talk about, the business analyst and/or administrative support. One of the things that I am noticing, we have very little support services for our senior leadership team and/or the quote-unquote strategists in the department. So when we talk about creating new financial strategies, not just from a financial strategy standpoint, but a business plan standpoint, we don't have anyone in that particular department that would actually do that. So what tends to happen is a department director would simply try to sit down and figure out what the input variable factors are, what rents might look like, start calling brokers, I mean, doing all the work themselves. The impact of that from an opportunity cost standpoint is they're not spending time in a leadership capacity, working with their managers or junior staff. So though we are getting some things done, we are not nearly as effective at times, simply because we are needing to do work. And so we have a lot of working managers. I do want to talk to you all about potential productivity gains and/or some of the strategy things you're all talking about and systems integration, and what the addition of some of those internal-facing services may mean for the overall association as compared to just a doer role somewhere, you know, that we have done a couple of times. The administrative support along the same lines, one of my first observations, because we didn't have anyone in Brittany's role when I first started, and I walked around to the SLT and said, I mean, the demands for me, just in the first couple of weeks, I said, I may need to borrow someone's administrative assistant because I'm having trouble just keeping track of where I'm supposed to be in deliverables and output and everything. And found out we have zero administrative assistants, zero. CEO, chief operating officer, I mean, typical places you'd see them, finance director. We do have one in recreation that helps a lot, actually doing a whole lot of things within the recreation department, not just a traditional admin. So there are certain things that we all become much more effective when we have helped getting organized and getting things out. And we are taxing, in this case, Brittany quite a bit, as she needs to do a lot of work with you all, Elections Committee, BOC, BGC, and so forth, without administrative support to help track things, get things where they need to go. I mean, all the things that really good administrative assistants do now, certainly well beyond what someone used to, maybe used to call secretarial work. They're really kind of mid-level people that are integral in helping an organization, especially at the management levels, be successful. So I would like to talk about both of those things as we go forward. And again, we're going to talk about seasonal dollars and how we've been spending those or not, you know, as it were, and whether or not we're achieving levels of service, or if we go to a part-time versus full-time model in certain services, there may be some dollars without just an outright add. And then, you know, lastly, on that point of the seasonal staffing, that's come up a couple of times. I've already committed that we're going to look at that. I just wanted to mention it here again. Obviously, there are some line items that keep coming up, and someone will say, hey, you haven't spent this money. And we know that, so we'll be taking a look at that and whether or not that money could be, could be better allocated somewhere else and still achieve the same level of service. So that's all I have for everybody here tonight. This is where we were proposing to stop and then be ready to move into the next phase, which is really looking at the common themes of what was said tonight so that we can put all these ideas that are going to come kind of blasting forward through those filters. I'll admit, from my perspective, there were some things that were, seemed pretty clear from a value statement and some that were a little more murky. But my main goal is to start at a big level and then whittle down with you all so that when you get to October and November, yes, this is the direction we want the budgetary decision to go, not, now I want to add this whole new thing, you know, and it's $30 on the assessment, and that'll never work, you know, you all have told me it's been disjointed. So anyways, that's where we are, and happy to take any last questions.
I have a couple of questions with Tom. And it goes back to the general satisfaction of people with our assessment. It's my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that something like 95% of our members pay their assessment in one lump sum within 30 days. You're nodding, I, I, on videotape.
Yeah, that is correct. Before the due date, now, we send out the invoices mid-December, and from December 15th all the way through March 1st, the members tend to pay. I would, I would say it's more like 80, 85% pay by that due date.
Okay. And then the number, the percentage of members who avail themselves of the installment payment option, do we know what that percentage is?
Yeah, it's probably about 4% to 5%.
Okay. And then counsel, the number of delinquencies we have in any year?
I would say it's 200.
It's, yeah, it can go from 200 to 400.
So, so we have 2,400 households, 24,000 households. My point being, you're talking about a 1% delinquency rate. You're talking about a 90% pay it within the first month, right?
By the due date. By the due date. 60 days.
60, but still, I'm still talking about, they're not availing themselves in the install. When I first bought my house, I had to use the installment payment process, okay? That was just the nature. We bought more house, we stretched to buy the house that I bought. I bring all of those forward to say, I conclude from that, that those numbers tell me our assessments are not an overwhelming burden to the vast majority of the people who live in this area. The last question I want to ask is, there is an arrangement where someone who qualifies for the county abatement, real estate abatement process, also gets our assessment abated, okay?
50%.
If they apply, I got it, I got it. But what I want to get to is, how many people go through that process out of 22,000 members?
It's
24,000, strike that, 24,000 households.
It's about 300.
Again, John, I can comment to that because that was actually something that came up. That was an issue very near and dear for Sarah, and we brought it up with Supervisor Alcorn a couple of times. We could probably talk about it again. The primary issue became, how can we make it easier for someone who's filing for that qualification at the county? We're trying to get them to tell us, you know, who all those individuals are so we can get them a reduction in the assessment here. And we just run into some issues with county legal staff about sharing of And we just run into some issues with county legal staff about sharing of the information and things. So we're trying to get in a, a forum that allows them to check a box that will give the county the rights and authorization to tell us so we can then make it easier. But we've had a few snacks, anyways, yes, we're, we're working on it.
We should continue to work to make it easier. My, my point only is, it goes back to, I'm citing them for a different purpose, which is, yeah, we got to make it easier. But on the other hand, there aren't a lot of people who are feeling so stressed by our assessment that they're availing themselves of the reduction process. And, and so we should not feel that we're being overly oppressive to our membership. The membership is just fine. By and large, the membership is doing just fine. And there's, there's some room here to enhance the level of service that they're experiencing. The feedback I get is, I can't pay my bill. The feedback I get is, it's too big a pain in the neck to file with the DRB. The feedback I get is, we're not providing the service. It's not, you guys cost too much. By and large, are there one percent, two percent, three percent of our membership who would stand at that podium and tell, tell all of us that we're charging too much? Yeah, absolutely. But that's six thousand people and I haven't seen six thousand people at that podium, six hundred people, excuse me. I haven't seen six hundred people at that podium telling me I'm charging too much. So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to waste their money, I don't want to flush it down the toilet, but we're providing good value for money and we will continue to provide excellent value for money. We need to increase the quality of our service. And I think that needs to be our focus, is how do we give them a better product going forward? And if that means we got to charge them more money, I think there's a lot of tolerance for that in this, in this population. Anyway, I thank you all for your time tonight. I will encourage, even though we've been trash, trashing the survey tonight, I mean that facetiously. If you haven't taken the survey, please take the survey because we'll be making decisions regarding the capital budgets of the association based on the results of that survey. We're getting good responses so far, I'm told. It is a scientifically, so far we've got enough responses to have a scientifically valid result. But we really would like it if all twenty-four thousand homes participated. I know that's unrealistic, but one can hope. With there being no further business between, before the body this evening, we stand, we stand adjourned at ten oh two. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.